All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 7:07. I'm joined by my colleagues, Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Studo, Mrs. Gonzalez, and Mr. Walner. And we'll begin with the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." And to my colleagues, I had a couple of back and forth with our clerk today with regard to the minutes. So I'm gonna ask that we just skip over that. And I'm gonna ask that we take something out of order because we've had this on our agenda for multiple meetings now. And we do, I believe, have Pastor Del Turco with us. So we're gonna take, out of order, begin with a donation from the International Family Church, and we have to vote to accept that. Am I wrong, Mr. Gilberto?
Madam Chair, no, he's not signed on quite yet. So I don't know if we wanna go to the previous agenda item. And I will let you know once he's signed on.
Did you have a specific time?
I had asked him to be here for 7:15. So he's just, we're not quite at that hour yet, so.
Okay, all right. So I'd ask that we, if we could just pass over the minutes to my colleagues until we can, I can get my changes finalized with our clerk. Because I don't think we finalized them today. We had a back and forth on it. And our next...
Madam Chair, Pastor Del Turco was, I believe, just joined us.
Okay, okay. So let's move, let's just hop over to Agenda Item Number Six. And is Pastor Del Turco muted? If you could unmute him, Mr. Gilberto.
Yes, thank you, I'm here.
Welcome. We appreciate your joining us. Thank you. And if, Mr. Gilberto, if you wanna take it away, and we welcome you to the meeting.
Thank you.
Again.
Thank you for the donation.
At another meeting again.
Pastor, so to you, Pastor Del Turco. And for those who are watching the meeting here this evening, you know, a very generous series of donations have been made to the town by the International Family Church, which is located on Concord Street here in North Reading. Donations made to multiple municipal departments, as well as to our school department, which I believe accepted those donations, I think, in late January. Specifically, the International Family Church made donations to the police department in the amount of $20,000, to the fire department in the amount of $15,000, to the Council on Aging in the amount of $5,000, and to the Veteran Services Department in the amount of $5,000. All very generous donations, done very quietly, directly to the departments for which we are very appreciative and very grateful. Unfortunately, when we were initially intending to accept these, we were in the midst of a very significant conversation relative to dangerous dogs. And so we were delayed and unable to accept them in a timely fashion this evening, that evening. So I really appreciate Pastor Del Turco. You're making yourself available again tonight to come here this evening.
Well, thank you, my pleasure. Yeah, that was a contentious meeting. You guys, God bless you. I like, I'm sitting there listening to all this, and I think, I said, I think I need to pray for these people. This is like, this was crazy. And what you have to put up with, God bless you. I'm sure that there's a lot of good that takes place, but those tough meetings are difficult. I did get to hang around to see how it got resolved, so I have an unfinished book here. But nonetheless, it's our pleasure. You know, we also donated $40,000 to the school department. You know, like I told Michael, we didn't do this for a photo walk. We didn't do this for attention. You know, last year was just so difficult for all of us, so challenging, that we ended the year feeling like, you know what, we need to be who we are. We are open-handed church, meaning we're very, generosity is one of our core values. And we feel like the best thing to do oftentimes to improve your world is just to be a seed sower, to be a value-added person. And so we try our best to be value-added to not only our members, but to our town. We love our town, we appreciate our town. We've been quiet and have just served quietly. We, of course, would love to be more involved in what to be, but that was the only message to say, thank you, town, for all that you're doing. Thank you for going through the worst time in memory. And we wanted the places that serve people the most, that do such a great job, and are not thanked as often as they should be, to say, we're with you, we're behind you. We were able to do this, and we did it not only for the town, but we also said, we're sending a clear message that we're not gonna, we're not gonna, we're not leaving 2020 quietly. We're gonna enter 2021 with high expectations and better days ahead. So that was kind of our motive. And so thank you for receiving it. Thank you for being so gracious to allow me this moment. And we look forward to do more for our town.
Well, thanks. The thanks go to you and to your church, and to the members of your church, pastor. And I won't speak for my colleagues, but I will say, we can use the prayers every week, every meeting. But I'd like to give my colleagues an opportunity to just acknowledge you and your church and your membership for the very generous donation. So, Mr. O'Leary?
Again, just, you know, behalf of the community and myself personally, you know, I think your assistance was well-targeted, certainly. You know, our first responders, we've had a substantial amount of added expenses and things associated with dealing with the pandemic, the school department, Council on Aging again, with their outreach towards our most vulnerable citizens. All that you've donated here are gonna go to assist us in meeting the needs of the neediest people in our community. And greatly appreciated. You're a good member of the community, and we're glad you're here. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you, our pleasure.
Mr. Studo? You're on mute.
No, we appreciate it, especially in this time. I mean, anything, anything helps where, you know, we're always looking for resources, and we were waiting for the shoe to drop on town finances, just because of everything going on. So it's just, it's very much appreciated. And I think it's a very kind gesture in a time where, you know, I'm pretty sure that Mr. Del Turco could have found a lot of other ways to also spend this money. So it's very appreciated.
Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
I really just am astounded, and I think you're a shining light in the darkness. So being a real example of Christianity, and really can't thank you enough.
Thank you very much.
The Walner?
Yeah, just this generosity, from my point of view, I've been on the board for two years, is unusual, to say the least. And so it's a welcome surprise. And I can assure you that the people that will be receiving this money, the department heads and the people that will be receiving this money, will be putting it to very good use. These things are taken very seriously, and it won't be, it won't be just kind of blended in. There'll be some purpose for this money, it'll be put to great use. So we hope that you'll be proud of it.
Yes, I believe that.
And just again, on behalf of the board and the community, Pastor, just to thank you and to ask you to take that back to your members, and just to thank them for their generosity to the town. And we do have to vote to accept this, believe it or not. So do we have a motion, Mr. Studo, and you're on mute?
Madam Chair, I move to accept gifts from International Family Church as follows. $20,000 for the North Reading Police Department, $15,000 for the North Reading Fire Department, $5,000 for the North Reading Council on Aging Elder Services Department, $5,000 for the North Reading Veteran Services Department.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Immanuel Pelias, aye. We thank you. Thank you, Pastor, for joining us.
And we can still, we can continue to use your prayers too, thank you.
Amen to that, yes.
You definitely have those, I promise that. And if there can ever be any assistance, some kind of project comes up, some kind of something happens, we love getting involved in projects. Don't hesitate to reach out. And thank you for all that you do, for helping so many, having such great patience. And we appreciate it very much. And it's great to be in partnership together. Thank you, have a great night.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to our next order of business. We have on the docket the matter of 20 Elm Street, Chapter 40B. And the members in your packet, there's a letter which I'd like to just read into the record. We have a lot of attendees. And the letter is a letter directed from New York Ventures LLC to Michael Gilberto, who's our town administrator. Dear Mr. Gilberto, I am writing in regards to our recent conversations about 20 Elm Street in the hopes of breaking the impasse over the future of this site. With the litigation now entering its second year, my attorneys have advised me that there is no end in sight, and legal fees are only expected to continue to rise on both sides. Especially in trying financial times like these, I believe it is incumbent upon us to try to find common ground on a development on the site that promotes the needs and interests of the town, while also making financial sense for me and my family as we look towards the future so that both sides can put a stop to the mounting legal fees. As you know, my most recent settlement offer was for a 132-unit, 55-plus condominium project under Chapter 40B. My attorneys have informed me that the town council's response to that was 100 total units maximum. I appreciate that offer and have looked into its feasibility. Unfortunately, due to high-end rising infrastructure costs, it simply doesn't pencil out financially, particularly under Chapter 40B. In the interest of bridging this gap, I would like to propose an alternative. My proposal is for 100 market units plus an additional number of affordable units in a number to be negotiated. Many affordable housing bylaws require 10% affordability, which would mean 10 units for a total of 110 units. This would be more than meeting the town halfway and a reduction of almost 50% compared to the 40B. This project would be all 55-plus condo units and would preserve the restaurant building and pool. In order to meet state septic requirements without crossing the threshold for a treatment plant, the 110 units would need to be developed as two separate projects, as was the case with the 132-unit proposal. With affordability of 10%, this project could not be permitted under Chapter 40B. It would require a rezoning. Although rezonings can sometimes be controversial, I understand that the amendment to the State Zoning Act recently signed into law by Governor Baker now allows rezonings with a simple majority vote in some instances. One potential way to come under this new law would be to rezone the site as a natural resource protection district, which would concentrate development to the upper portion of the site and the area closest to the Ipswich River left permanently undeveloped. I believe I can make a proposal like this work financially, and I think it would bring a lot of benefits to the town while avoiding any school impacts. It would also provide environmental benefits and protect the Ipswich River. And for that reason, I would hope to also get the support of neighbors. These are just the broad strokes of my proposal. If this general concept is something that you think the town can support, my goal would be to negotiate a memorandum of understanding with the town regarding the details of the new zoning and the town's support of the same. If there are additional items of impact mitigation that the town would like to see addressed in an MOU, we would be open to a discussion of that. I really believe there is a compromise to be reached here that works for the town, for me and my family, and for the neighbors. You and I are both reasonable men, and I hope we can find our way there. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you, Nicholas A. Yeva, manager. You know, before I turn over for discussion to my colleagues, we do have quite a few people here for the meeting this evening. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we remind the members and participants and attendees to know that, you know, this matter is in litigation, and we have been addressing quite a bit in privileged discussions. So we wouldn't be, by discussing this, we don't intend to be discussing our litigation strategy or any case-related information. But I do want to, at the outset, let the members of the community know that, you know, this is active litigation, and that taking the issue to Mr. Gilberto in this manner, you know, that's one way to do it. But I do also think it paints Mr. Gilberto in a light that's unfair. And people can take this to social media. And I hope that everyone that's attending and listening recognizes that what people post and publish on social media isn't the facts all the time. And it isn't even the facts most of the time. And that the town is pursuing and has taken a stand in the litigation and is maintaining its stance in the litigation on behalf of the citizens of the town. So at first glance, it appears that there's some side or backdoor or side discussions, and that isn't the case, and that's not accurate. So I just wanna stand forth and tell you that that isn't how our town administrator operates, number one. And number two, I think it unfairly portrays the stance that we have taken. And we are defending the matter, and we are in litigation, fighting on behalf of what the majority of the residents have told us we need to fight for. So taking it to social media isn't gonna get you all of the facts. And I thought it was important for us to put it on the agenda this evening so that my colleagues and I could discuss this and give Mr. Gilberto the opportunity to speak as well if he did. And I also think that Mr. Yeva can take it to the streets. He can meet with the butters. He can go ahead and talk to people about alternative proposals. But it should be done out in the open, in the sunshine, not in a back-room conversation or a letter to the town administrator. You wanna air out possible alternatives? You have a pile of people waiting to hear from you, and you should be taking it out to the street. So these alternative proposals, there's nothing stopping Mr. Yeva from meeting with neighbors, from meeting with the groups that are involved with this matter, sitting down and talking to people about what might or might not be palatable to them. And I'll end my comment and turn it over to my colleagues. But I'd like just Mr. Gilberto to speak too. Go ahead, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I just, a comment that I would like to make both for the board members to hear publicly, but also for the community to hear, you know, regarding the letter, is that, you know, there's a reference to recent conversations between Mr. Yeva and I, which were originated by him during our discussions in December regarding Group One Entertainment's now-terminated license to operate the Hillview function facility. During the conversation, I advised Mr. Yeva to submit whatever he wished to be considered by the town through his attorney to Town Council on this matter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gilberto. To my colleagues, do you have any question, comment, any input? Are we all set? Oh, Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, no, I just, I think it, I guess I understand Mr. Yeva's outreach and attempt to get us to go to the table with him or something, to have some further discussions, which we have never been opposed to doing. But I thought we made it quite clear to Mr. Yeva and his team and his attorneys that any discussion because of the pending litigation and any proposals that he'd be putting forth would be put forth through Town Council. And this seems to just be an attempt on his part to reach out, but also to circumvent the system which we put in place to make sure that, you know, we protected the town's interest. And again, as you pointed out, Madam Chair, there's nothing wrong with having discussions with the developer here in public. You know, so people are well-aware as to what's being proposed. And as you said, he can take it to the street. He can have neighborhood meetings, and he can try and muster some sort of public support, if he can. And if I were him, I would advise him to do that. But, you know, as far as responding to the specific proposal, this wasn't the appropriate forum. It wasn't what we had asked him to comply with. And at this point, I think he still should go through council. And again, as you pointed out, I think it put Mr. Gilberto in an unfair position when the topic of discussion and the reason for the conversation had nothing to do with the 40B proposal and everything to do with the license agreement to operate Hillview. So it was like an, oh, by the way, conversation, and it ended up being a letter to him, painting it out to be something different. So that's all, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Mr. O'Leary. Any, Mr. Studo, all set?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I, yeah, I feel that going this route and putting words in the TA's mouth is, you know, just another classic example, you know, from, of how not to get it done properly. You know, I think, I mean, if you're gonna put something in writing, at least be the truth. So I just wanted to say that, you know, I think it was very inappropriate in a lot of levels for this letter to be directed at the TA. And then furthermore, at least if you're gonna direct a letter to the TA and try to circumvent, you know, board, citizen, and everyone else in town, you know, by some back way of talking, you know, at least try to be as accurate as possible. So that's, I'll stick to that for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Studo. Anything else? Mrs. Gonzalez, all set? Mrs. Gonzalez?
I just think it's fair to say that we, as a board, are united in that thought process. And we wanna see it done the right way. So, and, you know, we have your back, so.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Mr. Walner, anything, all set?
Yeah, I think we're just, you know, I think the board is united. We're satisfied with the approach we're taking. And it's still, we're just continuing forward. So Yeva can do what he wants, but we're continuing on our path.
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair, just to get, again, point out that, you know, this was a document that was, the correspondent sent to the town administrator. It's public information, public document. And the board thought it was important enough to give it the light of day that it deserves.
Definitely, especially because it's talking about alternative proposals to the 40B that was proposed. It's currently in the, you know, under, in the litigation pattern. So that, it is important for people in the town to, because we're carrying, we're carrying the will and the wishes of the people of the town as board members here. We don't decide if, you know, everything ultimately results successfully in that litigation for the applicant. It still goes back to our zoning board for permitting. And so it's really, we're, you know, continuing to, you know, take the town's position in the litigation, and we're fighting that position on behalf of the town. And there still will be, if it doesn't, if that's unsuccessful and it results in a favorable decision for New York Ventures, there'll still be a public hearing that'll be held by the zoning board at which people can appear. So it isn't a litigation pattern. It's there, it is, doesn't seem like it's gonna be resolved anytime soon. But it is important for members of the town to be aware that, you know, he's clearly proposing one or two alternatives to that 40B, as the letter discloses, so.
Just as a point of information, Madam Chair, having been involved in all the other 40B projects that were ever proposed and even built in the town of North Reading, the process that was instituted previously, and again, it's entirely up to the Board of Appeals, was that they had a group of town officials and residents in affected areas and members of the community involved as a team to negotiate with all the other developers to come see if there could be a consensus reached as far as any proposal to bring forward through the zoning board of appeals deliberations. And those were all done in public session, posted meetings. So that, you know, I don't see any reason to deviate from having any discussions about alternative without involving public discussion and public meetings. So it's up to the zoning board of appeals how they wanna handle it moving forward. But the past practice, and again, I've been, I was involved in every single one of those previous discussions and projects, and it seemed to work out very well in relation to educating the public, giving them the facts, what's on the table, and then what any final recommendation to the zoning board of appeals could be made. So I see no need to deviate from that.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Important, important information. All right, so if there's nothing further on the topic, our next order of business is public comment. So if we have anyone that is here for public comment, I think you can either use the raise hand function or also use the chat room. And I do see...
There's one hand raised.
Mr. Gilberto?
There's one hand raised. Ms. McGoldrick has her hand up.
Okay, great. So if you could, Ms. McGoldrick, if you could unmute. Oh, you are unmuted, okay. Welcome. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Sarah Allen McGoldrick. I live at 4 John Bickford Way. I'm an active member of the Defend Ipswich River Communities Group that has been fighting against the 20 Elm development for the last two years now. To me, Mr. Yeva's letter indicates what many of us already know. He is losing the fight at the Housing Appeals Committee, and his attorneys are advising him accordingly. This side letter to Mr. Gilberto, while being unfair to, it sounds like what the conversation was in fact, between the two gentlemen, is yet another bad faith attempt by Mr. Yeva to push this project through under whatever channel possible. Mr. Yeva has repeatedly demonstrated that he is not concerned with straining North Reading's resources, both the natural resources of our Ipswich River and our community resources of our public service departments, our schools, and our roads. If Mr. Yeva truly cared about this town and wished to put forth an act of good faith, I suggest that he instruct his attorneys to withdraw the subpoenas he has filed, seeking the protected and confidential information of our residents with disabilities living in group homes. I support the Select Board acting on behalf of the town to dismiss this letter and reject this inappropriate compromise put forth by Mr. Yeva. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have, I know it says healing woman, but I know it's you, Mrs. Stoltz. I can see your hand raised. Hello. You have to unmute yourself too. That's okay. There you go. Welcome. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Elizabeth Coolidge-Stoltz, and our address is 2 Gellis Drive. And I'm not sure to what extent I'm supposed to say something. My husband has a question. We are the family of the unnamed individual who lives in a group home in North Reading that is under the jurisdiction of the subpoenas issued by NY Ventures LLC, who has retained an attorney because we did not have a choice in the matter because their constitutional rights were entangled in this mess. Because of the issue of privacy, and I do not know any other parents or guardians who are aware of the threat to their loved one, I have not tried to breach the privacy shield and notify anyone else. But there are dozens of other people who stand the same risk of irreparable and possibly permanent harm as my loved one. So while this legal action is being taken by one family, you should know there are dozens of people who are listed as residents on the census in North Reading who have no voice now, except what I can provide, but who live here and are real people and who could be permanently harmed by this action, not because the town doesn't have safe harbor, but because it has asserted safe harbor. And the way Mr. Yeva wishes to get his way is to run over their rights. To get it data, he doesn't have a legal right to... to get at data he doesn't have a legal right to have and no developer has ever gotten before by breaking the state process to get at their information so that he can break the town's status, making safe harbor the minimum that the state asks each town to do for its citizens into a speed bump for him to get what he wants, which would not even permanently add affordable housing to the town, but only temporarily added while he permanently adds to his personal profit. And so I wanted to speak on behalf of dozens of people, many of whom I know personally literally have no voice because if I don't, they're going to be lost in somebody's search to make a lot of money. And they can't be here tonight. But I could. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stoltz, and just to, just to not respond, but to add to that, that the the town's position and the town has asserted and the the town has asserted in the litigation, contesting that in alignment with the position that you bring as an intervenor uh, in your motion to intervene, so that the town's position is aligned, but you bring a face to the argument. So it is important and and hopefully you will be permitted to intervene because of that. So we are in alignment with that position and uh, you know, contesting the subpoenas that were served. So we we do, we do, you know, that is a matter of record. So the town's in alignment with contesting that. I just wanna make sure that that's clear.
Absolutely, and I've read the town documents and not only agreed with them, but got legal opinion that they were actually extremely well written. Um, I just wanted to make it clear that the people at issue here are not abstractions. They're actual people.
Sure, and I think it's helpful. You know, we can be in a litigation as a town and not have a face, and I think you bring the face to it, which is really important. So thank you. Um, is there anyone else that would wishes to speak? I don't see any other hands raised, nor do I see chat. Mr. Gilberto, all set?
Madam Chair, um, Ms. Spano has her.
Oh, I I'm, I apologize. I was looking over to the right. I'm sorry. Ms. Spano, can you please state your name and your address for the record? I apologize.
No worries at all. Uh, Andrea Smano, um, at three Hayward Farms Lane. So first, I just wanted to thank the board because I think, you know, you guys have worked so collaboratively and have done such a great job of keeping the community in the loop. Um, Mr. Gilberto, it's obviously clear that this, you know, that you you have the community behind you in this situation with this crazy um, letter that you received, so you know, be assured that we are all, we all understand the situation as it is. Um, and I just wanted to kind of comment on and echo some of the things that Sarah said. One that, you know, as a one of the leaders of Defend Ipswich River Communities, um, you know, we've talked a lot about where the line is, where we, what we feel is acceptable, what isn't, and you know, this is a nonstarter. I think you guys all probably, I mean, it's a nonstarter, especially given that it was directly to Mr. Gilberto with no attorney. Um, it just didn't follow any process, but the deal itself is is a nonstarter. You can talk to the community. I don't believe the community would have any any positive things to say about it. Um, and I think, you know, in terms of good faith, he, Mr. Yebba does not have any, he's not done anything with good faith. So for us and for you guys to put forth good faith and have some discussions, it doesn't seem like a likely possibility. I mean, he started playing hardball. He's bullied people. I've seen a butters cry. He misrepresented Mr. Gilberto in his good faith attempt. Like, there's really no good faith there. So until we see any good faith, which I don't know if it's possible, I don't think that we have any motivation to sit down and discuss anything. I think we're in it for as long as we need to be in it for. We are um, you know, very willing and eager to support the town's position. And um, you know, one thing I think that did happen out of this thing, after all this money has been spent by the town and all this, these hours of all of these people that have come together is that, you know, it really has kind of brought the community together a little bit in that all these different walks of life have come together and have this united vision here of wanting to protect what is ours, what is the town and and what's right for the town and all of our resources and our people and our and everything. So I think that we should continue this trajectory and kind of stay the course and just remember that, you know, we've gotten this far together and that if we change course now, it's, you know, if we keep the course, it's gonna, we're gonna see the result tomorrow, so. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Spano. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? For public comment. All right, now let me just look and make sure no one's waving. No, all set?
Don't see anybody. Ms. McGoldrick and Ms. Spano, thank you for your comments.
Yes, appreciate it. All right, so I think we can move on now to uh, seven thirty. Seven thirty public hearing. We're only fourteen minutes late on it, so. Uh, for the June and October annual town meeting dates for twenty twenty one. Is there a notice in the packet that should be read?
There is, Madam Chair, on page thirty-two.
All right. Okay, the Town of North Reading Public Hearing Town Meeting Dates. The North Reading Select Board would will hold a virtual public hearing on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty PM to receive public input on selecting dates for the June and October twenty twenty-one town meeting in accordance with North Reading Home Rule Charter two dash four dash one. And the hearing notice includes the hearing information as to how to access the hearing via the internet with the Zoom link, telephone, uh, dial by location with the meeting ID. Okay, that is posted and published by the Select Board. Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Cool.
So can you hear me okay?
We should open the, open the public hearings. I guess we've just officially opened the public hearing. Mr. Go- Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm joined this evening by Town Clerk Barbara Stats and um, Parks and Recreation Operations Manager Maureen Stevens. Um, the three of us have been in conversations over the past few weeks along with the Superintendent of Schools regarding uh, potential uh, options for um, for the Oc- for both the June and the October town meetings. And um, at this stage, we are recommending to the Select Board to um, to determine that the June town meeting be held on Saturday, June fifth, and that the October town meeting be held on Saturday, October second. And the reason for that is because while we certainly believe we are making progress with regard to the ongoing pandemic and we are optimistic that we'll be in a situation where we'll be able to see um, some of the restrictions on gatherings lifted. Um, that is by no means a certainty, certainly for June, but also I think potentially for October as well. And so we felt that the most prudent thing for us to advise the board to do at this point in time was to plan for outdoor town meetings, uh, as we have had on now two occasions on the turf field on Saturday mornings, both uh, on June fifth and October second. Um, if the public health conditions determine that we're able to go to the more reliable venue um, indoors, we certainly have the ability to do so. But um, at this point in time, it's unclear that that will be the case, and so I think the feeling is the the earlier in June that we do it, the better, so that we avoid um, the weather being um, too warm, and the earlier in October that we do it, the better, we avoid the weather being too cold. So um, I I think that we're unanimous in that recommendation uh, at this stage, and again, we, at this point, the facility is available and can be made available for the meetings. Um, it just would be a matter for the board to uh, to take a vote to determine that those would be the dates for the town meeting at this stage. And um, Ms. Stats and Ms. Stevens are here. We're happy to answer any questions if there are any, but I do think at this stage, it's probably pretty straightforward at this point.
Okay, do my colleagues have any questions? None? I I just, were you able to talk to Mr. Murphy?
Um, so we invited Mr. Murphy this evening, although I don't see him um, here. Um, so we've not communicated directly with him on it. Um, I was hoping he'd be able to join us this evening, but I don't, I don't see him.
Okay.
I would that obviously, as you're aware, if there was an issue with that date, you know, we have the ability under the Public Health Emergence Declaration to continue the date if need.
Yes, okay. All right, so in that this is a public hearing, is anyone in attendance? Does anyone in attendance wish to speak um, regarding this matter? If you could raise your hand.
Madam Chair, I would note too, we put in the board's packet, the uh, calendars that the town clerk put together for both June and October to show the holidays.
Yes.
Where there's no conflict with the charter provision that prohibits a um, a town meeting being held on a major civic or religious holiday.
I did, I did see that. Thank you, Clerksats, for that. I don't see any hands raised. So um.
Did I see a hand go up from um, Mr. Stoltz? No?
No.
Thank you.
All right, so seeing none, I guess we could, do we have a motion?
Yes, you do. Madam Chair, in accordance with the Town of North Reading Charter Section two dash four dash one, I move this at the dates for the twenty twenty-one town meeting as follows. Saturday, June fifth, twenty twenty-one. Saturday, October second, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo and a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary.
I.
Mr. Studo.
I.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Hi.
Mr. Wallner.
Hi.
Emmanuel Pali is I. All right, thank you to Ms. Stevens and Clerksats for joining us too. We know it's gonna be a lot of effort to put this together. You did, you did amazing jobs and Public Facilities did amazing job setting up our our other outdoor town meeting. So we really appreciate all the extra effort the school department, everyone put into getting that ready for the town, so. So I guess, I guess, good luck getting these next two ready. Clerksats, did you want us to add anything?
I I just wanted to echo that comment. Chair Chairman Emmanuel Pelli, that it really is a collaborative effort on everybody's part. You know, it really, really and truly is. So thank you for recognizing that and all the departments that that do play an integral part in getting this, you know, to happen.
There's a lot of planning that's unseen that goes into it. It doesn't just happen that day. So we thank you for putting, thank you to Mrs. Stevens for helping out and getting this squared away for us. All right, we have a, you know, a few minutes before the eight o'clock hearing, so should we go to the next item and get the COVID update from Mr. Gilberto?
Um, Madam Chair.
You wanna, you wanna hold off on that, cuz I think we have a longer discussion, Board of Health discussion awaiting us, right?
Yes, Madam Chair. My my recommendation would be, I can see Ms. Luckowitz has joined us and she has revised the survey training policy. I think that should be a court discussion if we wanna go to that item.
Sure.
Amy, are you there? Did I see you just a minute?
Yep, I'm here.
Yeah, just on time. I think if you're if you're up for it, I think we're ready to to take that item up.
Sure.
Okay, so we we did have our first reading, so it's saying first reading continued. We we talked about allowing Ms. Luckowitz to come back with the modification on that. Right?
Yeah.
All right, well, welcome.
Man, um, to Madam Chair, through you?
Yes.
To Amy. Amy, do you have the document that's before the board? I know you gave us comments and we incorporated them, and I'm.
On page forty-eight in the board's packet, folks.
Can pull that up.
Oh, you mean to share that, you mean to share the screen?
I'm pulling it up right now, yeah.
Okay. And Madam Chair?
Yes.
If you don't object, could I um, could I share my screen and perhaps put the revisions right up on the screen for everyone to look at?
That's what I, I thought that's what you were asking. I'm sorry, yes.
I I wasn't, but that's a great idea.
This one's easy to find. It's the last page in the package.
And so um, I guess, Amy, would you like to go through? Do you want me to go through it?
Sure, is this reflecting the one that I sent today?
Uh, if you sent one today, I haven't seen it, to be candid with you.
Oh, no, okay. I did send one on this morning.
Okay, and then I I have not seen that.
And do you mind if we switch then and um, I can share my screen?
I I don't object, Madam Chair, through you?
Of course, of course.
Thank you. Well, let's see. There we go. Everybody see that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Shall I begin?
Please.
Okay, so um, there weren't tons of changes. I did, I was able to incorporate the one, suggestions um, you yourself and also um, address Mr. O'Leary's concerns related to allowing, excuse me, employees to serve under certain circumstances related to um, being supervised. So uh, you can see the track changes on the right. Um, just again, addressing, you know, you know, in the first paragraph, um, addressing that we need to see the expiration date, because I have come across a couple of certifications that were lacking that. Second paragraph highlighted um, that again, um, everybody who was taking orders and serving out uh, serving alcoholic beverages. Uh, we deleted the part that says in a retail setting because this should be of all settings, so we changed that to just in North Reading. Um, we just move up the paragraph that you see and in the third paragraph, that large sentence that says uncertain, uncertified servers and salespeople may. I would just move that up to paragraph two. That was my note today. Sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Okay, no, I apologize as well.
That's okay. Um, and again, addressing the evidence must be retained on hand and it would be acceptable if that was an original copy, printed copy or digital image. And um, that very final sentence at the end was something that I think that we had all agreed on, that there would be a possibility of a show cause hearing if that was that was applicable.
So questions, comments to my colleagues? Mr. O'Leary.
Uh, no, I think it's a, I think it's, I think it addresses uh, what needs, what needs to be addressed, which is updated certifications for all employees and that the uh, employer needs to have that information readily available when any of our personnel go in and ask for it. And specifically, they have to have it and produce it at the time of the license renewal. And if they don't comply with it, so I don't think it's a, it's a stretch that it's, this is, this is overcomplicated or uh, difficult to uh, to maintain the the records uh, for the Police Department or Amy or anybody else. Uh, so I I think it's good.
Great. It actually makes my, it actually makes it easier for me.
Right, and it should be. And again, when they come in for renewal, they should be able to produce their roster of employees who serve alcohol and make sure that they're certified and certified to us that they are. There's nothing wrong with that.
Thank you.
That's great. Any other comment? I just have one, one recommended addition just to keep in the format in your third paragraph down, and this is just my English major rearing its ugly head here. In the, in every other paragraph, you have an and/or, and I think it's important to say only certified staff may take alcohol or to serve alcohol beverages and or sell alcohol beverages just to keep it consistent with really the whole purpose of adding that provision in for us.
Okay, I think that makes a lot of sense. Mr. Gilberto, I'll make that note here and I'll send it to you again.
Great, and we can present it with that revision for the second reading, Madam Chair, if that's okay?
All right, with my colleagues, um, it seems like everybody is. All right, with my colleagues, um, it seems like everybody is, there's really no, no other issue with this. Thank you for uh preparing it, preparing it and incorporating the modifications we talked about last meeting. Anything else? Are we all set with this? Good?
Well done.
I think we're good. Thank you, thank you very much for making the changes and we'll we get to see you at another meeting probably, maybe, maybe not.
I'll be there.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Lutzkowitz.
And Madam Chair, there is a motion, I believe, for the first reading uh approval and waiving of the reading of the entire policy. Mr. Studo, you have that?
Uh, yes, I do. Yes. Uh, Madam Chair, I move to approve the first reading of the amended policy one point two one, alcohol licenses, server training programs, and to waive the reading of the entire policy.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez. Miss, Mrs. Gonzalez. Oh, is.
Oh, Madam Chair, yes, we can't hear, Mrs. Gonzalez, we can't hear you.
Aye.
Hey.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
And Manu Pali is aye. All right, motion carries. Okay, so we'll see that again in its final format for the second reading, right? Okay, thank you, thank.
Thank you, and I understand you're, um, if I may, you're recognizing Pam Vath today. I just wanna say thank you uh to her. She was a very uh active member of our coalition, so. Thank you, Pam, I saw your name on there, I'm not sure if she's there, but I wanna make sure there knows that she was part of that, thank you.
All right, that's great, thank you.
Thanks.
Kind of jumping around the agenda, so.
Gotcha.
Yeah. All right, so we're, we're on target to start the public hearing at eight PM on Young Wan Brothers Incorporated doing business as Ginger Gourmet, a transfer of the common victualers all alcohol license. And um, I think we have all parties here are all parties present.
Well, I, I don't know whether you can hear me, but I'm an attorney wager.
Yeah.
And I believe.
You're representing the applicant, correct?
Yeah, that is correct, and I believe my two clients are also present.
Mr. Mr. Gilberto, do we have to, oh? Do we need to, oh, I don't think I closed the hearing, speaking of which, do we open that public hearing on? I don't think I closed the hearing on a town meeting, so.
Big move, we'll adjust the record to reflect that, Madam Chair. And there is a hearing notice on page thirty-five of the packet for it.
Okay, great. All right, so. Okay, this is the Town of North Reading Select Board Notice of Public Hearing in accordance with Chapter one thirty-eight of the Massachusetts General Laws. A virtual public hearing will be held by the Select Board on Monday, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-one at eight PM on the application of Young Wan Brothers Incorporated doing business as Ginger Gourmet for the transfer of the common victual as all alcohol license from J R Crystal Incorporated doing business as Ginger Gourmet to be exercised at two sixty-five to two seventy-seven Main Street, North Reading, Massachusetts in a one-story mall structure unit of four thousand and twenty square feet with dining areas, cocktail and sushi bars in the front and kitchen rear. The hearing notice that's been published contains the uh hearing um access via internet, the Zoom link, the telephone, the mobile, the meeting ID and the passcode by the Select Board. Published by the Select Board. So we'll open that public hearing and we will invite the applicant to come forward by the attorney, if you could introduce yourself, your name and address and it, who you have here uh with regard to this application, please.
Sure, good evening, uh, Madam Chair, the board. My name is Wei Jia, W E I, first name, last name, J I A. And my office is in Boston, that is a one forty-five Tremont Street, Boston. And uh, tonight from the screen, I can see Jerry is with me. Jerry is right there, and he's the, he is one of the partners of uh, of this uh venture, and he's the uh uh proposed the manager for legal license purposes. And the other partner, Yong Ching, I don't, I don't see him there, sir. But that's okay.
I think, I think he he's online, but.
Oh, okay.
Oh, that's okay. He's in the waiting room, I'm gonna admit. There's two folks in the waiting room.
Okay, all right. But in any event, um uh, the uh Young Brothers uh is organized and incorporated just for this purpose to take over the business assets of uh J R Crystal, Inc. And uh, they are basically going to do the same uh restaurant service, same cuisine. Uh, Chinese plus uh Japanese sushi cuisine. So they do not plan to do any renovation or any addition or any, any repair for the matter, if everything is, it goes all right. So um, we are waiting for for, for the, I'm waiting for my client to get ready, they are the um, uh, necessary documents to submit that to the Board of House uh for food service, uh for food, uh food establishment permit. Now, we have already uh contacted the landlord and uh this is lease is gonna be uh extended to uh twenty 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 thirty-three. A five-year plus five-year option. And uh, um uh, the package also contains um all the financial documents that to establish for A B C C purposes the, the source of their funds. And uh, I, I do not believe the uh, the submitted, the lease assignment contains the landlord's signature, because we didn't have that at the time with the submission. But the way, I do have it now, I can provide to the board later on after the meeting with the landlord's uh signature. Uh, this is a, a Mr. Mr. Jerry, Mr. Wong uh, has been in the restaurant business for um over, I think over twenty years, or close to twenty years. They have, the family owns a restaurant in Acton, Massachusetts, and also a restaurant in New Hampshire. And uh, Jerry is gonna be uh move his uh, you know, to focus his operate, uh, his time uh is North Reading Venture, once it is uh, it is ready to, to open. Now, I see, I see Yong Ching, the other partner, is in now. And the Yong Ching is also a restaurant owner. Now, right now, he's in Virginia, but he's moving over when we have this uh uh transaction closed, and he's gonna move over here to Massachusetts and to, to operate the restaurant along with the, with the Jerry as the manager. The Yong Ching, as I said, also operates and owns the restaurant, but Jenny is gonna sell it, as I understand it. And uh, we uh um, the package also contains the um, the common vickers license application uh along with the A B C C application. And I believe Jerry already and the Yong Ching already are done with uh, with the Police Department's requirement to do all the fingerprints. Uh think of last month, or sometime this month. That's probably is, is, is the nutshell of what, what they are gonna do here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, to my colleagues, do any of my colleagues have any questions with regard to the application? See, I see none?
I, I saw one hand.
That's Mr. Gilberto.
Um, Madam Chair, through you, just a couple of questions for the, the applicants. Um, this, this transaction is proposed to be financed partially by funds um in bank accounts and also through a personal loan, is that correct?
That is correct, and uh, the most, uh, a large chunk of the funds is from uh Jerry's Restaurant in New Hampshire. The family restaurant, yes, that's considered a personal loan, yes.
Okay, and um, when I looked at the um the application for manager, um, it appeared that um Yuwan, Yuwan Fang, I believe is how you pronounce his name. That this will be his first experience as a manager, right now he's an assistant manager at Saki House, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so he's proposed to be a partner and a manager?
Yes.
Okay, and.
And he's gonna be the one, he's gonna be the one in the premises.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Does, do any of my colleagues have any questions? Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, no, I was just again looking, just to follow up, assurances that uh that uh Jerry would be, you know, on the premises primarily most of the time, or I don't know how many hours he's looking to devote to it, uh so that if he's gonna be the license holder, you know, we, we need some assurance that he's gonna be there.
Yeah, yes, uh, the license holder, I suppose, is gonna be the corporation, but yes, he's gonna be the manager. And the one, if, if, anytime he's not there, uh, Yong Ching, the other partner, is gonna be assistant manager uh to be in on the premises.
Okay, and then as far as, you know, all the tips training and all that is uh gonna take place prior to uh the transfer.
Jerry already, and I'm sorry, Jerry already up and served safe, and the Yong Ching is getting it.
And as far as employees that are there now, are they gonna be retained? Are you gonna bring in new employees who also have to be trained?
Yes, I'm not sure about the employee side of the, I believe they're gonna, you're gonna high, they're gonna keep some and the high some. But yes, that's, that's very important to, to get them trained and uh tip certified.
We, we just passed a, we just revised policy on uh tips training and, and having the certifications in place uh prior to uh license and transfer, so just be aware of that. Um, the other thing is, I just wanna make a comment that uh I'm heartened to hear that you're, you're looking to do a uh a five-year extension on the lease and you're planning on being there for a long period of time. I hope you're, you're very successful, again, the current owners will now be the previous owners. Uh, they've done a marvelous job and I'm happy to see that they're surviving here and that, I hope you.
Yeah.
Very, I hope you're very successful with the challenges that have been faced and you will continue to face in the next few months, so.
That's for sure.
I appreciate your, your, your commitment to doing so and um, it appears as though you have the financial wherewithal to sustain yourselves through this and wish you nothing but success, and by the way, the scalps amazing, adjust that, they're amazing, and this is.
All right, thank you.
I just had a couple of questions, if none of my other colleagues have any questions, and then we'll open it up to public uh comment. Um, you said Saki House is where Jerry works right now?
Jerry, you want to say that?
Yes.
Jerry, how do you pronounce your last name?
Uh, Wong.
So I, I don't wanna, I wanna be formal, not call you Jerry, even though I appreciate you letting us, but. So, Mr. Wong, what is your job at Saki House?
Uh, everything. Uh, as, I can make sushi, I can do the bartenders, I can pick other forms. So sometimes cooking.
So you, you do have experience serving alcohol?
Yes, yes.
And I think your attorney mentioned Acton was another family-owned restaurant? Do you have another restaurant in Acton?
It's the, it's my brother-in-law, uh, running the restaurant in Garner.
A garden, I'm sorry.
That, that's not a place that you worked at, right?
Yeah, yeah, I work there sometimes, not, not all the time.
Oh, okay, what do you do there?
So when they need me, I will go there, just uh helping package the full, or sometime give they show hand, so I just, just go over.
So in order to be the manager for this establishment here in North Reading, are you leaving your employment with those two uh? Establishment?
Because my, in Saki House is, I'm running for ten years, I have my brother in here, I have my uh, uh, my brother's wife, so my uncles. So I, I have plenty times, if I, I gather to the new restaurant, I can go there. So, is, I can make time, so if I uh, go in the North Reading.
Um, I think Mr. O'Leary asked us, but how, how many hours are you, or something like this, but how many hours are you planning to devote to the North Reading establishment, where you're going to be serving as the manager?
Yeah, probably uh, these. I don't know how many days, like uh, three, four days? Four days?
Okay. Um, and I think you said Mr. Chu is going to move from Virginia to, or your attorney said that.
Yes, yes, yes.
Do you, Mr. Chu, do you have experience in alcohol sales? Service and sales of alcohol? You're muted.
In the, uh, yeah, no, you're not. Oh, yes, I got like um, almost ten years experience to um serving the um alcohol on the bar. So right now, I'm running this restaurant with my partner. And I work almost like um sixty to um eighty hours a weeks in the restaurant, so I believe I can handle the alcohol service.
So are you leaving the restaurant that you're working at to come and relocate to North Reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, my family all gonna move to the North Reading.
Oh. Wow, that's great, okay. All right, thank you. Um, now we'll open it up to anybody who is joining us and Mr. Chu, can you mute yourself again? This loud echo. Is there anybody in attendance that wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this application? If you could raise your hand so that we could re- recognize you to speak. I see none. So do you see any, Mr. Gilberto? I see none, and I see none in the chat room.
I see none.
So we'll close that portion of the hearing, and if there's any, no further discussion, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve a transfer of the common particular all alcohol license from J R Crystal, Inc., DBA Ginger Gourmet, to Young Yon Brothers, Inc., DBA Ginger Gourmet, two sixty-five, two seventy-seven Main Street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary.
Aye.
Mr. Studo.
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Walner.
Aye.
And Manu Pali is aye.
With you, nothing but success.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Okay, now we're gonna move backwards and in the agenda to the COVID nineteen update and vaccination update from the Board of Health. And we also have joining us, we, we should welcome and recognize Senator Tar, Senator Bruce Tar is joining us. Thank you for being here.
Representative Jones is also.
I.
I saw his name anyway.
I got new glasses, so I don't know why they're not working for me.
I don't know, I don't see that.
I'm here, Madam Chair.
There you are, and we also want to acknowledge, thank you, Representative Brad Jones is joining us as well. It's so important to have our legislative delegation with us when we talk about this, these topics, so we'll let you kick it off, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and so I would like to ask uh the Chair of the Board of Health who's here, Mr. Hunt, if you could just introduce the Board of Health and Public Health Team?
Great.
Sure, um, I wanna thank the Board of Selectmen for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. This is a very rare event, that it's a Board of Health meeting within a Board of Selectmen meeting. Does not happen that often. I've been on the board for thirty-five years, believe it or not, and that has not happened before. Um, we wanna talk to you tonight about the, the COVID nineteen crusade that we have been waging since March of twenty twenty, which is a year ago. It began with our first case, who was a Biogen employee and a town resident that brought COVID nineteen to our attention. So I'd like to introduce you to our board and our Health Department. There are seven of us. Um, we're a fairly substantive group, uh larger than I've ever seen in the town before. A mixture of volunteers and town employees. First, the Board of Health, I'm, I'm Gary Hunt, I'm the Chairman of the Board of Health. There's Pamela Vath, who is on the board and has been on, how many years, Pam, have you been on the board?
Pam, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Pamela.
I was just trying to count it up, it's either twenty-two or twenty-three.
Okay, we, we also have many, many years of service from folks such as Pam and myself, and Karen Martin, Karen, are you there?
I am.
And Karen joined us a few years ago, so um. and then there's the Health Department, which is what you see most every day when you come into Town Hall, and that is our our Health Agent, Mr. Bracy. If he's on, Bob. Bob, are you on?
Yes, Gary, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Um, and our Administrator for the Department, basically the heart and soul of our department, Stephanie Connolly. Stephanie, are you are you on?
I'm here, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, Stephanie. And also our new our new acquisition, new hire, Donna Covey, are you are you on, Donna?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
I I'd like to acknowledge her. She's replacing Pamela, who served as our Health Nurse for a number of years. Uh, most notably the last year through this COVID crusade, I should call it. And I'd like to take this opportunity to acknowledge Pamela for all her service to the town. She did several stints as the Public Health Nurse. Um, and some, most of them voluntarily, but we we had to coerce her at times uh, because there were no no other alternatives. And I just want everyone to be aware of Pamela's commitment uh, to the town. And last but not least, we have Mary Samos. I don't, Mary, are you on? Hmm, I don't believe so. Mary is
I'm not seeing Mary now.
Mary is is an agent, an agent to to the um uh, yes, and there then then there's several other folks I'd like to acknowledge that are important part of this. Mr. Michael Murphy, who's the head of our, you know, the health and safety within the town is responsible for oversight of the Health Department. Our Town Administrator, Mike Alberto, who's been very active and very cooperative, working with us all the time, but most notably in the past year and and God love him, Mr. O'Leary, who's the liaison to the Board of Selectmen, and I trust he keeps you all well informed on what we're doing on a on a day to day basis. He's been very, very involved in all of our meetings in the past year or more. So I'd like to acknowledge that contribution as well. Uh, I don't know, Pamela and Bob, do you want to just spend a minute to give a quick update on COVID? Where we were, uh, where we are, how many cases we had, where we stand before we get into the uh, the emergency preparedness and COVID um clinics that we've run. Pam or Bob?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you to Madam Chair, I would defer the numbers to Mrs. Vath, and then I'd be more than happy to speak on the clinics that um, up to this date.
Okay, thank you. Pamela?
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chairman, to tell you the numbers. Um, right now, we have a total of one thousand twenty-six patients who have been notified, we've been notified as having positive or suspected probable infections with COVID nineteen. We have this week, we have had eighteen new patients. And that is significantly different than what we've been averaging on a weekly basis. Uh, we are currently monitoring sixty-nine cases. We have nine hundred and forty-one cases who have recovered. Just as a little reference point, a weekly census this week was eighteen and over the last few weeks, it varied between forty-three, forty-seven, sixty-six, sixty-eight, fifty-three, thirty-one, sixty-six, seventy-four. So it's been all over the place. Um, right after, a week after Christmas, we had an average of thirteen patients a day. And then it dropped to eight patients a day. And then two weeks after Christmas, we had an average of seventeen patients a day, which gave us a that blip uh that we that the state and we anticipated would happen after the gatherings for the holidays. It's been very busy and we've been fortunate enough to have the help of a lot of the folks in Town Hall. Who have given up some of their time and their hours to help us do contact tracing and notifying patients. So they need to be thanked very much for the work that they've done.
Thank you, Pamela. We've also had a lot of support from the School Department and Dr. Patrick Daly and the school nurses have been assisting us. It's been a major effort, not only of us, but also volunteers and other town employees. So a lot of it, you're aware of, a lot of it happens behind the scenes, but it it's been a a battle. It's been a battle. Robert, do you want to give us a little update on your perspective on COVID, please?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, through you to Madam Chair and the members of the Select Board and our our State delegation who's here this evening. Thank you for the opportunity um to give a brief overview of what we've done up until this point. Um, just so everyone's aware, the Health Department has met frequently uh since March um to be updated on the COVID nineteen vaccine and and updates from the Department of Public Health. Also, it's it's noted that that as a community, uh, we have worked tremendously uh well and and met weekly with the Town Administrator, the Director of Public Safety, uh, the Fire Chief, uh, the Public Health Nurses um, and the Superintendent Schools, just to kind of keep ourselves abreast of of current information as it has come down through uh weekly uh calls that I have taken part in uh twice a week with the Department of Public Health since March. Um, you know, through the Board of Health, we have implemented several orders over the last year or so um to try to minimize or uh the spread of the virus within the community uh, working with the schools and and working with the local nursing home and working with our delegation. Uh, up until this point, uh, on the vaccination clinics, we have conducted twelve vaccination clinics uh for first responders um to seventy-five and over. Uh, last week, the Governor had uh stated that we would move into a a new priority group of sixty-five plus uh plus individuals with two or more comorbidities. Um, so right now we're moving into this week to do uh, two more clinics this week, two more clinics next week before we get into uh, second doses uh for the folks that we've already administered the first uh vaccine for. Um, so that's really just a very quick overview of um the clinics and 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 what we've done up until this point.
Okay, thank, thank you, Bob.
Uh, just Gary, if Bob could just highlight and articulate a bit more clearly in relation to the second doses. We we had a lot of uncertainty up until Friday, I guess. Uh, so ju- just to to state publicly again, Bob, as to, you know, where we're at as far as those people who received the first dose here. And the insurance that they're gonna have, so.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. O'Leary. Um, so we've, we've had three clinics right now for our our most vulnerable population, uh, seventy-five and over. And we've vaccinated approximately a hundred and seventy residents. Um, up until this point, up until last Friday, we really didn't see, uh, receive any confirmation from the Department of Public Health as to whether or not prioritized for second doses would be uh allocated to the community. Um, we got that confirmation uh on Friday. Uh, and moving forward this week, uh, the Health Department, uh, with the assistance of our Director of Public Safety and the Town Administrator, uh, will be putting a support staff together to contact uh those hundred and seventy residents uh and schedule a second vaccination uh clinic date and time for them. Uh, moving forward, uh, with the next four clinics that we have this week and next week, um, folks will be able to get uh their COVID nineteen vaccination card uh as they leave the clinic with a date and time um for their second uh vaccination, which will take place in March.
Thank you.
Are you, are those going to be held in North Reading?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Vaccination clinics?
Yes, they'll be, they'll be held at the Hillview Country Club.
Okay. Can you give us a sense of how many um dosages you are receiving every week?
So right now, uh, due to the limited uh availability through the Department of Public Health, we're only receiving a hundred doses a week. Um, we have received um a hundred doses this week, which would have given us a total um of about three hundred and seventy um doses for the phase two priority group, um, not including the uh seventy doses that we got for first responders.
Okay. Mrs. Gonzalez?
Um, I don't know if I understood that, but I was going to ask you if the people who are need to get their second dose, are they taking priority over over the other people so they get their second dose?
Uh, I'm I'm not sure if I understand that question. I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, if I could help out a little bit, Bob, maybe if you could uh back up to last Wednesday afternoon when you got the memorandum from the State Department of Public Health stating basically that uh the dosage or first doses are going to cease coming to communities such as North Reading. But there's been a commitment to make doses available for the second dose for those people that were already vaccinated and it'll take place at Hillview. So uh, which is one of the reasons why uh speaking with the Chairman, uh, Mr. Hunt in the Board of Health last Wednesday, I thought was important for them to be present here this evening to give the Board an update as to, you know, what's transpired. And with our legislative delegates, delegation here, you know, Representative Jones and Senator Tar uh being fully aware and cognizant as to what's what's going on because they represent more than this community uh in the challenges uh that the communities have been facing. I mean, we prepared ourselves, uh, we've got the clinic set up, it's operating well and uh not even operating anywhere near capacity, we just don't have the doses to do it. And now the uh, the state has determined that local clinics such as North Reading will no longer have vaccine available. But for those that already received the first dose, there will be second doses here in North Reading for them.
Okay.
So Bobby might want to just back up the last Wednesday and lay it out.
Yeah, so uh, we we did receive a a memorandum from the Executive Office of um Secretary Sotters that um second doses will be allocated for residents who already received the first uh vaccination. Um, and so we we will be able to um be able to provide those folks who have previously received the first vaccination and folks who will receive a first vaccination the next two weeks.
But moving forward.
Moving, yeah, but moving forward, um, it appears based on limited uh vaccine that the state is moving towards regional clinics and the local Boards of Health uh may not be receiving any additional vaccine um after we receive the second doses um from the Department of Public Health.
I I think Chair Chairman Hunt, I think this might be a good time for us to to um just let, we have our legislative delegation and I think it might be a good time for us to hear from them, if that's all right with you. Um, just because they're here and I appreciate that the time that they're taking out for us. So if if we could let them speak to what they know.
If I may, Madam Chair, if I might speak just briefly.
Oh, sure, of course.
About the the evolution of this whole clinic came out of what's called an emergency preparedness program that the town has been a participant in for almost twenty years. And one of the objectives of that program was to prepare for a health um emergency such as this, and I can't think of a greater health emergency in my lifetime or the last hundred years than this pandemic. And we were instructed to participate. We did so willingly, devoted resources for the last twenty years only to be told recently that they didn't need our services anymore. So as a result, many of the Boards of Health and the Health uh Departments within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts feel betrayed. And it's disgraceful the way that they've been treated by the Department of Public Health. And I think that's something we all need to understand that this wasn't something that we took lightly. We made a commitment to be prepared to do this. And I know Mr. Tar and Mr. Jones know that from the other communities that they represent, and I thank you.
Yeah. It's a good point. It's something that you've been getting ready, getting us ready to deal with for a long, long time. We didn't know that it was going to be this, but we were ready, ready for it. So I think if it's okay uh with you, I'd I'd actually just like to to hear from our, we can, if you don't, if you don't mind.
Please, please proceed.
Representative Jones and then with Senator Tar, it doesn't matter who starts. But I think it's helpful to, you know, give us, give us a medification on it. We really appreciate you coming here to attend the meeting.
No, and we had, we had a, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, we had a good dialogue this afternoon. Um, kind of a preliminary meeting to kind of go with 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 Gary and Bob and uh others. Uh, and I I think you guys have touched on, I think one of the important points to address some of the concerns all of us have had is about the second dosing that some of us have immediately got in in the aftermath of people who went last Thursday. Uh, and that everything that I've heard and been told, and and it sounds like exactly what, you know, Bob and the town has been told is that there is a commitment to uh make sure that a second dose is delivered to the town so that everybody who has received the first dose in North Reading will be able to receive a second dose in North Reading, obviously in our case at Hillview. Um, you know, and and you know, we're all looking for the absolute guarantee. And I feel comfortable to the extent that that's the commitment that's been made. I'd feel a lot happier if if in some location within North Reading, those doses were present and under Bob's lock and key, if you will. Um, we're not there yet. Um, but we did, obviously, we got a delivery last Friday, I think, for which would be the first doses for, I think, next week's clinics. Um, and, you know, working to make sure. Uh, again, I think a lot of this is the frustration of um miscommunication, lack of communication, changing communication um at all levels, let's say from the federal to the state and certainly the state to municipalities who are kind of left holding straw despite doing a lot of work in the very difficult circumstances uh and trying to work to make sure going forward that that's better. Um, understanding that at the base of it all, I think a lot of it is relative to the supply of vaccine uh to to the Commonwealth in our case, but obviously to all the states, uh, and that that has presented a challenge um to meet the demand. Uh, the numbers are not quite lined up with the amount of capacity that exists out there to go vaccinate people um in the various venues that have been created. Um, I think our preference of which would obviously be local, particularly with the populations we're dealing with uh initially, the most vulnerable, the most difficult to reach, uh, maybe the ones who don't want to get out, can't get out. Um, maybe not as tech savvy, uh, not as amenable to hopping in their car and saying, I'm going to go drive to Gillette or Fenway uh particularly during winter time, uh, unless maybe there were Super Bowl tickets involved or something like that. Um, but uh, those are challenges and and we certainly hear it uh on a daily basis. I'm I'm, it's actually a daily and a nightly basis, I should say. Um, but I think we, you know, the message we received, uh, we want to continue to take that message that uh for North Reading and I think all the towns I represent, and I'm sure the same is true for Senator Tar, that there is a strong preference to continue on the path that's sort of been delineated over the past twenty years about trying to address this event locally in dealing with people that are familiar faces in terms of the people administering the program, uh, in dealing with people that, you know, know in the community and kind of know where they live in those nooks and crannies and how to approach people that may be resistant to coming out or or seeking help or taking help if it's offered.
Representative Jones, of the hundred and seventy, I I just, I just want to be clear. So of the hundred and seventy that were vaccinated and the hundred more that will be vaccinated, they will be, those two hundred and seventy individuals will be allowed to be vaccinated.
My my understanding from what Bob said was that we've done a hundred and seventy that are awaiting a second dose. In that we have another hundred that will be this week, I think, between Tuesdays and Thursdays clinic. And then next week, there would be another hundred between Tuesday and Thursday's clinic. That would create a total of three hundred and seventy, and that the commitment is that we would have second doses to administer to that group of three hundred and seventy people at the appropriate time, whether it's the, I think we're using Pfizer, so I think it's the three weeks twenty-one days um sequencing between first and second dose. And I I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong with that, Bob.
Uh, Representative, yeah, we're using Moderna, so that would be twenty.
Oh, Moderna, this is four weeks. Yeah, all right, thank you. I apologize.
So that that, I think that that answers Mrs. Gonzalez's question. She, when she said that they would take precedence, I should think she just was asking with the individuals that were allowed to be vaccinated here, they'll be allowed to get their second dosage.
Right, and I think with the commitment, the better understanding of a commitment from the state, I think, what I understood Bob to say was that going forward, when you get your first dose, she'll get you sort of your, your ticket for your second dose and that the town would circle back to those people who got And that the town would circle back to those people who got a first dose but hadn't got a second uh, appointment scheduled to, you know, reconnect and say, okay, here's, here's when you can come in.
Okay, good. Okay. Um, and then moving forward for the remainder of the residents that want to be vaccinated, they would have to set up an appointment when it's their time slot at one of these regional centers? You don't foresee it coming back into the hands of the local board to be able to administer the vaccines anytime soon?
I would say, I would say I certainly hope that, I only foresee it if we get to a level of supply um, that's far greater than we have right now. Um, you know, I mean, there's some good things on the horizon. Johnson and Johnson has their hearing for their emergency use authorization, I think this Friday. That's a single dose. But again, uh, you know, as I said to people, unfortunately creating these vaccines isn't, isn't an overnight thing, I think the Johnson and Johnson is like sort of a fifty to sixty day cycling through. Um, I think Pfizer and, and Moderna are longer than that, although they're trying to decrease the, the timeframe by which you can sort of start a batch and and have it go out the door. Um, that's my understanding, so I think that you will continue to see the pharmacies have it because they get an allocation separately from what comes to the state, so the, the CVSs um, and the Walgreens and I think some of the Stop and Shop retail pharmacies is one, obviously the VA gets a, a distribution as well. Um, and then obviously there's the, the distribution the state gets. Uh, and that's gonna be broken, I think, going forward into first doses and second doses.
Does that, do, any, any, does anyone have any questions?
And I know Bruce is here as well, so I'm sure.
Yes, I would, I, I was, I was hoping to recognize you too, Senator Tar, and thank you as well for joining us for all this. Everybody's so concerned about it and worried and nervous and upset and aggravated and you know, we're hoping that the, the next version of the rollout works a little bit better than you know, not that, that the people that are handling it locally can't do a good job, we're just kind of surprised that the rugs kind of pulled out from under the.
Agreed, agreed and understood.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add, Senator Tar?
So, so first of all, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be able to share in the conversation tonight. Uh, this is obviously a subject that's important, uh, to Representative Jones and me. And we are working every day, um, on issues around vaccine and it's important to be able to hear the concerns of the folks that are on the front lines and I do want to take a minute to thank uh, the members of the Board of Health and, and the Health Director for the work that they've been doing. Uh, this has been a long road, even before we got to the subject of vaccination. You know, we've had issues around testing and health protocols and other things and I just want to say thank you for the work that they've been doing. Um, with regard to the most recent iteration of it, and I think Brad and I understand that we have capacity in Massachusetts to be vaccinating even more people than we are. If we could make full use of what's the infrastructure that's built through the emergency management plan at the local level. One of the difficulties is that, my understanding is we could be vaccinating somewhere over three hundred thousand people in a week. And we've been getting enough vaccine to do roughly a hundred and thirty thousand. And so we certainly have to make difficult choices, when I say we, I'm using the royal we of state government, of allocating a lesser amount of the product to the greater amount of, of outlets that we have for the product, and that's the challenge. And there's also a balance between trying to get to as many people as possible in some concentrated sites to accelerate development of her immunity. But on the other side of that balance is trying to make sure that we get to vulnerable populations who may have restricted mobility, um, who may have other health conditions that prevent them from being able to go to a super vaccination site and stand in line, uh, for instance. Um, in addition to some of the things that Brad mentioned relative to, um, computer capability and savvy in that respect. So it is a balancing act and we understand, uh, that the town has tremendous capabilities, it's been proving it. With regard to what's been happening at Hillview. And, you know, I would say that, you know, currently, um, unless we see significantly greater amounts of vaccine coming into the state, um, it's not likely that we're gonna see individual communities, uh, be able to conduct vaccination programs for first doses in the way that they have. But I would also say that, uh, I think it's reasonable to have a conversation about whether a cluster of communities, uh, might be able to do something locally, that's something smaller than a super site, but bigger than an individual community. And there's been a lot of conversation in our region going on about that. Um, we had good discussion about this afternoon with many of the people that are on this call to see if we can envision a way to meet, uh, essentially the new rules because, you know, one of the other changes that was announced, uh, when the hundred doses per community was revoked or changed was the fact that if communities could band together and meet certain criteria, they could as a collaborative be able to run what amounts to a local site but on somewhat of a, a more regional basis. And, you know, we are committed to pursuing that idea to see if it might be something that's workable. Um, we understand that the preference is absolutely to do it um, in the community, to continue to do it at Hillville, uh, Hillview rather, as it has been happening. But if that can't happen, um, we've also had a discussion about could we get four or five neighboring communities together to be able to do something that's a little bit less onerous than having to go to a super site? So there's a lot of conversations going on. And I would say it's a very, very fluid situation. You know, the, the decision, uh, to stop providing hundred batch doses, a hundred dose batches to communities seem to happen very, very quickly. And we don't know what could happen, uh, next week or the week after that. I would say this, I think if we were to see substantial increases of the amount of vaccine, uh, we could make a very strong case to go back to allocations for individual communities.
Thank you, Senator. So it seems like it, it would be who of us to try to connect with our surrounding some of our surrounding communities to see if they'd be on board with a re, you know, a plan to, to do a regional site, so to speak.
Well, that, that discussion is happening, um, and the town administrator has actually been very good at facilitating it. Um, a- along with, with Gary and Bob. And one of the pieces of homework that, uh, Representative Jones and I have is to start a conversation with the Department of Public Health about what the target is that we would have to hit. Uh, because we don't want to have people spinning their wheels on a project that even if we get to something that we think is workable, uh, can't get certification because that's the ultimate goal. Is to be able to get certified by DPH to receive doses in the name of a regional effort.
Right, and Madam Chair, I would only add to that, that the, the other piece of that is to achieve the certification level but have a comfort level that the commitment of vaccine was gonna come through so that we're not sort of faced with what you know, I think North Reading and other communities, I think North Reading sort of built a plan out to be able to do far more than a hundred a week than it's doing right now. Ideally, um, and then we're sort of, you know, stop short with saying, okay, I know you can do X, we're only gonna deliver a percentage of X. And now that's changed, so that if we pursue this regional and, and make all the commitments and do all the work that's there and sort of meet what the state wants threshold wise, that we're gonna be sort of, if you will, guaranteed the vaccine. So we're not faced with make, doing that exercise and in organizing it, only to find out that you know, four thousand a week is now, you know, five hundred a week. Um, and, you know, at that point, it's like, well, wait a second, we, we, we did a lot of work here. Uh, so I think it's sort of making sure the level of communication is better. Uh, and a comfort level that the commitment that, that might be made is actually capable of being met.
All right. Any questions?
No, just comments, Madam Chair, I think it's important to, uh, for the board to recognize in the community as a whole that, uh, North Reading was on the cusp of becoming somewhat of a regional uh, facility with the blessing of the Department of Public Health, only to have the, the rug pulled out from underneath them. And Bob, you can maybe, uh, comment on that, but the other thing is, you know, with to Senator Tar's point, you know, uh, things are rather fluid here, things change rather quickly. Uh, communication needs to be improved, but, you know, when you have pharmacies, you know, again, how they're gonna, how they're gonna administer the pharmacies, are they gonna administer these things and and observe people and do it a, a significant amount I have no idea. I mean, I can't imagine people lined up a CBS or, or Walgreens here in North Reading and doing it safely and doing the numbers that, that we could do in Hillview or anywhere else, but they've also, you know, cut off the hospitals and the doctors' offices, the clinics. So it's, um, i- it's a challenge, but, and Bob, maybe you want to, uh, just elaborate a little bit more for the board's, um, education in the community that, you know, we were on the cusp of, of of doing more on a regional basis and thought we had the blessing and then kind of felt like, and once again, at Hillview, but what Bob has set up in the Board of Health is, you know, you have a facility there that we could probably do, you know, a thousand, twelve hundred plus a week. Uh, and they were preparing to, to do that. But, Bob, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so thank you, Steve. Um, so, Madam Chair, through you, Mr. O'Leary, so we, we did have communications, um, with the State Public Health Department uh, early in February to set up a, uh, regional site at the Hillview. Um, to do vaccination clinics for North Reading and surrounding communities. Um, we did submit a, a, a plan, um, that was reviewed and approved by DPH um, to be able to vaccinate anywhere, uh, up to a thousand to fourteen hundred people a week. Um, and then unfortunately due to, um, the vaccine shortage, um, that, that plan got kind of probably put on the shelf. Um, and, and so unfortunately, we're not able to do that now.
But keep in mind that the, the criterion right now is the capability to, what, seven hundred and fifty a day? Um, which is a pretty high threshold, but again, with the local level here, if we were talking about consulting with the five other communities, now that's a hundred and fifty per day in each one of those communities. We could easily meet those thresholds, meet the needs, and I think what's, what's happened here and what is the greatest concern to all of us is that those who are most vulnerable in our communities have not been met, the needs have not been met yet. We haven't vaccinated all the people who are uncomfortable or unable or to, to leave our community and those are, those are the ones that haven't been taken care of yet. And now the clinic sort of has to stop before those, those needs are met and they're gonna have to go to further distances and out of town in order to get it. So it's unfortunate, uh, we hope that, uh, in their ability to be fluid about things, they could allow local communities to at least meet the needs of the most vulnerable in their communities and then pull the plug on us. And again, we had great conversations with Representative Jones and Senator Tar this afternoon. Uh, they took a great amount of time this afternoon to spend with us and listen to us and air, you know, we could air our grievances and pick around some ideas and uh, they've been very supportive and I know that they're gonna be vocal with the administration and trying to assist local communities like ours to continue to meet the needs of the most vulnerable here.
I, I would point out, Madam Chair, as a point of clarification, a- and this is something we discussed a little bit this afternoon. And, um, Steve just made reference to it. One of the odd things here is that Walgreens and CVS get their allocations directly from the federal government. So they're not coming through the apparatus of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which adds another complicating factor in terms of understanding where all of the vaccine is going.
Yeah, and I can't imagine that they're not gonna have refrigerators full of vaccine when other local communities could be putting in the arm a lot more quickly and handing out second doses. But again, you know, as you say, it's disjointed because they have contracted with the federal government and totally bypassed the states. And, uh, which creates a little more confusion.
There is some work being done to try to improve the accountability of that. Uh, as I understand it right now, when the vaccine is given, then it goes into the state database, but before it's given, there's no, the state isn't aware of how much CVS or Walgreens has and there's work being done on that for that exact point, because I think it's an important one.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Mr. Studo?
Um, just a couple of questions, uh, no, thank you, Representative, uh, Jones and Senator Tar for being on. Um, and I actually personally experienced one of the thing about distribution, well, not me, but for my dad who got a call from his heart doctor at MGH that said, his appointment has been canceled because they pulled the doses from the hospital, which was, you know, it was it made absolutely no sense to him and it was, you know, just so, but I'm getting some clarity here. But my question is, can you just give, besides what I've been able to read, can you give any clarification on the thinking on both? Um, you know, on calling it especially from hospitals who seem to have been their systems were working well. I mean, I know uncles and clients and friends who they got calls from their doctors and it was coming rapid fire, like, all right, come in next week, come in this, I mean, there was outreach, there were voicemails and it seemed like it was working fine, if you can, if someone can speak to that. And then also just a comment about the Walgreens. I don't knew, I, I do believe in maybe there should be a little bit more account, not even accountability, but just tracking because I don't know if anybody's been trying to schedule an appointment for a loved one through Walgreens the last couple of weeks, well, not the last couple of weeks, but in the last week. But you're able to go all the way and schedule the first dose. And when you get to the second part where it's for the second dose, it says, none are available. Which kind of doesn't make any sense because there's, there's fifteen minutes slot appointments available every single day for dose one, so it's almost like you know, is there is there any way for the state to step in and at least say like, I mean, it does, it, it just doesn't make any, like, it doesn't make any sense, that's the comment about Walgreens. But my bigger concern is if there's, if there's any clarity you can provide on what the thinking was to strip the distribution from hospitals because I, I, I think it's a really hard argument to make that the state has a better distribution system of medicine than hospitals do. So.
So, I'm not sure how much clarity more that we can provide. Let me just say, uh, relative to the Walgreens site, uh, there were widely reported issues today relative to problems people are having with that site, uh, which again adds another level of concern because if folks are turning to that alternative and they're encountering difficulty, then that just compounds an already difficult set of problems. With regard to the shift and the reallocation of vaccines, my understanding is the thought was to, uh, reallocate the vaccine to larger sites with the sense that they could get to a larger number of people faster and increase the numbers of those vaccinated more quickly uh, than folks that were doing it on a lesser scale. And that was even true with hospitals because they were doing, you know, one at a time and, and whatnot, notwithstanding the point that you made about the fact they were trying to do it quickly. So the best explanation I can give you, and I know it's certainly far from perfect, is the thought was by reallocating to larger sites that get to more people faster.
And is it a working, is it like a lot of things where if you try something, but what was happening before actually turned out to be just better, because you know, this is kind of new, I mean, well, not new, but for this generation it's new, is it something where if there's enough data in a week or two where it's like, well, actually Betazol and MGH are getting this out faster than these sites? Like, do you think it's something that we could pivot back or is that kind of like the ship sailed?
Uh, it, my impression is, and again, um, Representative Jones, you know, might have a different perspective, but my impression is this is something that's being reviewed on a daily basis. And, you know, the, the decision that we saw relative to local boards of health happened very quickly and I think a different decision could also happen very quickly.
I, I was gonna say, I agree with that and, and I think one of the issues that I've heard was that there might be certain healthcare facilities that weren't necessarily is willing to put the data into the system. Um, that, that this, that the hospital decision was sort of a pause in the way it's been being done. That it isn't necessarily sort of a permanent state, uh, because I think there is a lot of merit. Um, I've kind of talked to people who've gone, you know, done it, you know, locally, the regional, the super site, uh, and gone through their, their healthcare provider. Um, and I think it's, I think the hospitals, I hope, are, are certainly more of a pause than, than a permanent state. Um, again, I think a lot of this is fighting about supply, supply, supply. Um, and hopefully if Johnson and Johnson comes on board and that's a single shot. I, I mean, a single dose, uh, vaccination makes life a lot easier. Um, if the supply is there to be able to have people and say, okay, see you once and now you're in sort of the done pile. Um, and, you know, we're, we're, we're continually every day adding more people to the done pile to get, you know, the second dose now. And that's gonna rapidly start to go up, I think, uh, over the course of the next few weeks. Um, but I think, I, I agree that it's hopefully more of a pause, I don't think it's set in stone. Um, I would only, I would also say that if, if past is prologue, nothing we've experienced um, the past year seems like it's been set in stone, that it, that it potentially changes from week to week, maybe even day to day. Uh, so hopefully, you know, the hospital situation is something that we can see um, at least come back to some sense of, of being able to provide some level of support.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I just, uh, cause, uh, I, it's, it's a pertinent conversation because, uh, I have a doctor client that actually today described it that it's becoming the Hunger Games to get a vaccine. I mean, so it's like, I, I just, you, when you have a medical professional putting it like that, even jokingly, it's like, whoa. So, but thank you for your responses, it, it kind of gives me an idea.
And one of the things that, uh, we're both committed to is, is continuing to articulate your concerns uh, to the folks that are making these decisions, uh, because it is such a, a fluid conversation.
I'm sure we're not the only community that's making these complaints.
Not at all.
Everyone's probably saying the same thing.
Yeah, three hundred and fifty-one come to mind, maybe it's only, yeah, so three hundred and fifty-
Yeah, 351 come to mind. Maybe it's only, yeah, so 350 others. So, yeah, no, not quite that many. But yeah, it's not a unique argument or concern.
Madam Chair, I believe Mr. Gonzalez is trying to speak. You may unmute Mr. Gonzalez.
I, I think, oh, Katie, you're back. You were frozen.
I thought you were frozen. All right.
Am I recognized?
Yes, of course, yes.
I just wanted to make a comment. I want to thank the Board of Health and the Health Director. I was enough to get my mother-in-law over to the Hillview for their first round. Missed out the first week. It was like trying to get concert tickets. I got them in the second week. And so that was one of my concerns. I'm very reassured that they're able to go get their second dose there. And I just, I can't thank you enough for what you did. I know it had to be so much work. And I appreciate that you got it done. And it's really a shame that it's going to go. Happy to see that, to hear that the first dose people will be able to get their second dose. And that is reassuring.
Good. Thank you, Mrs. Gonzalez. Can you hear me? Mrs. Gonzalez, it just seems like, though, that our, our board and our, our people that are administering it here have to kind of keep the powder dry until this revamps itself or changes again, possibly. Is that fair to say?
Obviously, Madam Chair, I think that the good thing is, is that if the timeline works out with two more weeks of first doses and then four weeks of second doses after that, that hopefully will have a different model, which is hopefully retaining a local model sometime in that six weeks, so that we won't be, you know, sort of shuttering the doors and being hopeful that we'll be able to just build on what's already ongoing. And I know, I know Ms. Gonzalez touched on concert tickets, and that gives rise to one of the, I think, positive, hopefully positive developments and feedback that I've heard, I know Bruce has heard, is when you're trying to schedule an appointment, much like you do for getting movie or concert tickets, you go in, you pick your seat, and then your, your, your seat is held for five or six minutes, sort of while you complete the transaction, if you will, i.e. in this case, getting maybe your medical information in, your date of birth, all the other things in there. So all of a sudden, you don't say, okay, I just put it in. Oh, wait a second, my, my appointment is gone now. It seems like a no-brainer to me. Again, I'm not necessarily a tech person, and I realize there are a lot of different platforms. But that seems to me to be a component that would be hopefully easily added and sensibly added to the platform going forward, because that's one of the biggest complaints I've heard is, I said, oh, go with appointment here. By the time I got information in, it was gone. So give me five minutes to get my information in. I'm not asking you to hold it forever, but give me five minutes and I'll hopefully be able to get in, you know, my five questions, which hopefully are, most people have pretty readily available.
And use a Massachusetts IT vendor for that. Don't use an out-of-state. We have the best of the best right here in Massachusetts. Pick from the best of the best, and we might not have these issues. That's editorializing. I apologize for that, but.
Vendor we're using in North Reading too, so I guess we have to.
Mrs. Hovey, you have your hand.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen and our esteemed guests, Senator Tare and Representative Jones, as well as residents and friends of North Reading. I've only been in this situation for a very short period of time, but I realize the commitment that not only the Board of Health, Mr. Bracy, Mr. Murphy, and Pam have, and Mr. O'Leary, and Mr. Hunt, as far as their commitment to this program, number one. Number two, they are working on that, that aspect of holding the name until the whole process is completed. That's a new aspect that has just recently been addressed, because that was one of the big concerns. I do have a lot of concerns about our elderly population, because they were so very, they were so very appreciative of being able to come to the Hillview. And we're very concerned about having to go elsewhere. There are horrible stories where a woman I know, her 92-year-old mother, and she waited two hours in the cold outside Gillette Stadium. And my, my concern is all these elderly with their comorbidities will have secondary issues. COVID, COVID being one of them, but their, their, their ability to contact pneumonias and frostbite, and we could go on and on and on. However, that being said, you, you end up with an ethics situation as well, the ethical situation. We have a responsibility to our residents. And we're not getting the support on whatever level to provide that, that support and that healthcare. You know, they say all politics is local. Timon said that a number of years ago. But all healthcare is local as well. And I can't tell you how appreciative the elderly population was coming through this, the clinics. And what an excellent job Director Bracy has done and Pam as far, and, and the whole team as far as setting it up. So you go right through. It's exactly the way it should be. And we can expand that or we can hone it down to what we've been doing. But it's, that whole process is easily expandable. And I compliment them on that. So being new to the situation with a different kind of eye, I see how complete it is and how patient-focused it is. And I just, I don't want us to lose that for the community, because they are our responsibility. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So this is just kind of a recurring theme here. And hopefully, they'll return it back to the local, the local boards and our local officials to administer. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments I'd like to add. And Ms. Hovey brought up a great point, talking about the feedback from the elderly. And there is a group that's not on the call here this evening, but folks over the Council on Aging, the Director Mary Prinney, the Administrative Assistant Sherry Greer, the Outreach Worker Susan Tilton, they've worked very hard to assist in getting people connected with appointments, be it at the Hillview Clinic or at clinics elsewhere here in town. They were doing so before the statewide two-on-one system was up and running and met the need very early on. And they have been an active part at the clinics, greeting people and facilitating folks' interaction. And so I know they're not on the call this evening, but I do want to recognize them for their efforts in bridging the gap between the medical services being offered and the community that's being served at this point in time by those clinics. Secondly, Madam Chair, you know, I just echo the comments. We have had from the very beginning of the pandemic and certainly well before that, a very open and candid discussion about any of the issues that are facing the town here with Representative Jones and with Senator Tare. And they have, they have always been responsive. And once again, you know, when this issue has come up, they have provided us, you know, honest and candid feedback about the challenges that the state is facing. And a commitment as recently as today, and again, this evening, to advocate on behalf of both the local clinics to the extent that they can, as well as for the right regional solution here, if there's an ability to add capacity in the area for North Reading residents. So I know that there's obviously a lot of challenges, but I'm on the phone with them regularly with regard to these matters. And they have always stepped up and advocated. And they've always told us, you know, straight up, when, you know, what we're looking to do is going to be a challenge and what we have to do to get past it. And this has been no different. I want to thank them for their efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. All right. Any other questions, comments?
Just once again, I want to applaud Pam, the efforts on behalf of the community, and particularly during this pandemic, you know, public health nurse, and turning over the reins to Donna, but also willing to continue to serve, which is so important to us for continuity and the expertise that she's developed and brings to the table is phenomenal. And again, Pam, thank you very much for your service and your continuing service to the community. It's greatly appreciated.
Most likely, we're going to find you and bring you back somehow.
She's staying on the board, so.
Yeah, right. We're gonna make, we're gonna continue making use of your service, so. And I know we have on the agenda to recognize, to introduce and recognize you, even though Chair, Chair Hunt did do that, and we have been doing that, so. Mr. Gilberto.
May I proceed with an introduction? Just have a couple of comments, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Gary, is that okay? Do you mind if I go?
Please.
So first, and I know that Gary mentioned her earlier, but Stephanie Conley from the Public Health Department. You know, she really has been keeping us moving forward, you know, everything from setting up the website and the appointments that need to be made for the appointments, the staffing, the clinic, check in and check out when necessary. So thank you, Stephanie, for her efforts as well. With regard to the public health nurse, I would describe that is a position that's in transition in terms of, we have, you know, Pam, who is continuing to assist us with our vaccination clinics and with monitoring Maven. And I know that I've said it before, and I can't, I can't say it strongly, you know, strongly enough. Pam did not sign up for this. She stepped forward to help us out, to be a bridge between the longtime nurse and the next person to sit in the seat. That was two years ago. And she has just, you know, had this pandemic thrust upon her and has risen to the challenge in a way that honestly wasn't fair of the town to expect of her. But she has done that, day in and day out, week in and week out, in the best interest of the community, when she could otherwise be retired and not working every day on this. And so I really just can't stress enough the community's gratitude for her efforts. This is not goodbye, though. She, I think, is going to continue to help us out a little bit and will continue to be a Board of Health member as well, which we're really glad to hear. But we thought this was a great moment to recognize her. And then to also introduce Donna, who is here. Again, just a little bit of information on Donna. Donna has graduated from the Massachusetts General Hospital School and everything. She has a bachelor's degree in nursing. She has a master's degree in public policy. And I believe is also a candidate for a nurse practitioner degree as well. Is that right, Donna?
It's a doctorate in nursing practice.
Doctorate in nursing practice. Thank you.
Executive leadership, yes.
Comes to us with, much like Pam has decades of experience in various positions of direct nursing service division and nursing administration as well, most recently working out of, I believe, is it St. Mary's in Hoboken, New Jersey? Do I have that right?
Well, you know, it's interesting, because it's changed hands a couple of times. So it's now CarePoint Help. Yeah, yes.
So, you know, we welcome Donna here. We want the community to see her. Some of you have been to the clinic already and have met Donna. But we want to stress that you'll see her there, or Pam, or both administering vaccinations. And you know, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank Pam very much for taking the call, I think, three times, asking her to stay on. I didn't even have to block my, my number when I called her. I heard some audio that.
I did too. Before I turn to my colleagues, I just wanted to give Representative Jones and Senator Tare just one more opportunity, if there's anything else, because I know you're busy. We know you're so dedicated to us, and we really appreciate your joining us. And we know you are both working around the clock, so we want to give you the chance to give any final comments and go, because we know you have other stuff you're working on for us. And we just thank you for being here, too.
Well, I thank the opportunity to come on tonight. I was actually thinking, if Mr. Studo has ever had the opportunity to meet his other board members, since I think his election took place during the pandemic, and they've ever met in person, but I realize it's tough meeting, but this, this format is, is very challenging, and people are getting very adept at it. Although I have to say, I look forward back to going to the days where we can actually go to Town Hall and meet face to face. And hopefully, that light is, while it's still at the end of the tunnel, hopefully, the tunnel is getting shorter. But, and I would also say that the town administrator is understates how often we talk. He's not shy about reaching out, either by phone or text, pretty much seven by 24 if the need arises. And we're happy to try to be responsive as best we can. And occasionally have to give him news he doesn't want to hear, but feel it's more important to try to give an honest answer than the answer we think he wants to hear. So that said, happy to try to continue to be of help, both on the vaccine front and other issues that we face as a community in the Commonwealth.
We appreciate it. We really appreciate it. We do, he does, he quietly does things for us, just like you do. So and we know it's kind of a round-the-clock endeavor for both of you. But I think we, I think we pretty well have expressed, and I think the Board has expressed that, you know, we really would like to keep this in the local hands to be able to fight this and get as many people vaccinated as possible. But we also know you're gonna, you're gonna take that to any ear that'll listen and try to get that accomplished possible. So thank you so much for joining us. And Senator Tare, I don't know if there's anything else you want, like to say or add or?
Well, I would only add my thanks again to all of the members of the Board for the relationship that you have with us. Most often, that manifests itself through direct communication with the town administrator, who was a fantastic representative on your behalf. But we also appreciate all of your concern and your partnership with us. And of course, I want to say thank you to Pam, who I don't think could possibly have imagined what was going to be entailed here. And just say thank you. And also thank you to Donna, who, knowing what's happening here, has still agreed to move forward, which is, I think, really important. And, you know, that, that's what makes the town of North Reading such a great place, is that it has people willing to step up to the plate and help their neighbors. And that's why it's important that we try to keep vaccinations as local as possible. And Brad and I will continue to work for that goal.
Thank you, Senator. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you both for coming and giving us the information.
I think Ms. Bath is raising her hand. Ms. Madam Chair?
Oh, yes. Yes.
But after, evening, if I could just have two seconds, I would like very much to be able to thank Mr. Gilberto for all his kind comments. And I would not have been able to do this at all had I not had the support of Mr. Gilberto and the Select Board for my appointment as the public health nurse of five hours a week, which is what I agreed to for that. But I do want to say thank you to them and also to a few other folks. First, of course, to Bob Bracy, our Health Director, who's always been there, offering me new and ongoing challenges every day and supporting me when I needed it. And so much on Sunday. Thank you. And also Chief Murphy for his support during these recent challenges. Thank you. Next, Stephanie Connolly, our unsung hero at the Health Department, who was able to prepare me for the next step each day, keep me up to date, keep me on schedule, and help me make my workload manageable. Thank you very, very much, Stephanie. And Donna, I do not believe how helpful she is to you. And to those who taught me so much about our community and included me in my thoughts on how it might help, Mary Prinney at the senior center, Amy Lukovitz and Marcy Bailey on the Coalition for Substance Abuse, Jen Ford and Laura Miranda, who included me. They began developing new programs and thoughts and taught me what the town provides and what it might provide to both adults and children. And also a special thanks to the school nurses who have done a phenomenal job identifying and notifying students, staff, teachers, all about isolation and quarantine and being able to keep the schools as safe as they are. I am, at this time, a little sad, because I'm not going to be having my finger in all of these issues every day. But I'm very proud to be able to say I want to continue with my, um, Board of Health position. And I will be available for calls from certain people if they need me. It's been a little lonely as Donna has stepped up and begun doing her job. And I'm wondering why I didn't get a call from somebody. It's because Donna's already taken care of it. But thank you very, very much for all of your thoughts and your well wishes. And we certainly, I will be right here. Although I do plan to take a little trip south for some warm weather in the next few weeks. Thank you again very much.
Thank you. So I'm gonna turn it over to my colleagues for comment because I'm sure they have a few thanks for you too. Mr. O'Leary.
Well, I made my comments about Pam, obviously, you know, I, I won't say irreplaceable, but I'll tell you, that was the best five hours a week we ever contracted for. Really good. Appreciate it so much and appreciate your willingness to continue to serve. And, uh, and again to Gary and Karen and Donna and everybody else, uh, really the efforts that you're putting in now is, uh, unbelievable. And I, I know people appreciate it, but they really don't have an appreciation for, for all that it's taking, so. Again, just want to recognize your, your efforts. And again, I want to thank you for coming tonight. Again, when we spoke last Wednesday at your meeting, I just thought it was important for you to come here and articulate in a little bit, a little bigger forum. Um, and I think you've gotten the message out loud and clear and, uh, I hope people have a greater appreciation for all that you've done so far and will continue to do. So again, thank you very much. And Pam, enjoy it, you know, and, uh, block Michael's call, you know, block his number. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Walder.
Um, there's, there's been a, I, I'm learning tonight what's been going on, so it's a lot deeper than I ever imagined. So I really do appreciate everything that the board has done and, uh, looking out for the health of our citizens is great. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. Walder. Mr. Studo, you're all set?
Yeah, no, I just reiterate that point. I mean, it's, uh, I, I can, I, it's nice to know that like, it seems like we, you know, if we can just, sometimes at the local level, we can handle things a certain way and, you know, I just, I, I never heard that angle yet of how disruptive it actually was. So, you know, I want to thank everybody who put in a lot of time and then, you know, hopefully as this progresses, nothing's set in stone and, you know, we can get back to kind of helping at the local level.
Mrs. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I just want to thank all of you for coming, including, um, Mr. Tarr, Mr. Jones and, um, just shedding light, you know, there's nothing worse than rumors and hearsay and everybody not really having facts and, you know, pointing fingers and whatever. I mean, you've all shed light on this. You've made us all understand what's going on and what's happening going forward. And that's just so important. So I really appreciate you all taking the time to do that. And, um, and also I'd like to thank Mrs. Bath for everything. I've never gotten to meet you personally, so it was very nice to meet you tonight. Although Zoom, but, um, it's as good as we're gonna get right now. And I wish you all the luck. And, and thank you also, Mrs. Hovey, for stepping forward.
Yes, ditto, ditto with that. Mrs. Bath, you were in the right place at the right time, I guess, you know, so, so. We made good use of your service and we appreciate your continued service and welcome to you, Mrs. Hovey. So thank you very much for joining us and to the, um, Board of Health too. Also to, to Mr. O'Leary, who's our liaison. He's been keeping us regularly updated at every meeting. I know you're meeting regularly, which you always did, but this requires a lot, a lot more time and attention and devotion of your, of your time. And I'm sure these things are weighing on you. You don't just finish your meeting and stop thinking about it. So we appreciate your service and, um, trying to help us through this difficult, difficult time. So, thank you. And I don't know if there's anything else you want to say, Mr. Hunt.
Well, just, just one brief comment. Uh, this town is very blessed to have had the, my colleagues from the Board of Health and the Health Department available when this pandemic hit. We didn't plan for it. We didn't expect it. Became obvious to us about a year ago that something was cooking. And it's been cooking since and we've responded accordingly. Uh, Pam was, uh, successful in convincing Donna to leave New Jersey to come to Ma, back to Massachusetts. I used to live in New Jersey. That's not that hard of a pitch. And, uh, so I think, uh, I, I just want to, and I want to recognize all of the, the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrators and the, and Mr. Murphy for all their support. I mean, this, this would not have happened as well as it did if it hadn't been for all those people. Could have been, could have been a lot more devastating for this community. And, um, I just want to acknowledge all of them and it's a pleasure to work with them.
All right. Well, thank you. Steve, I think we're ready to move on. Next order of business.
You don't have to hang around for it either.
No, I know. You don't. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. Thank you.
Okay, next order of business. Discuss the proposed zoning change at 148 to 150 Park Street area. And Mr. Gilberto.
I believe, um, Attorney Latham is on here and I thought I saw Mr. Wheeler sign on as well. To the members of the board, you should have received an email from me, um, I think this morning with a link to information we put in the meeting folder for this evening, provided by, um, I believe Mr. Latham. It's a PowerPoint presentation, some more in article language, um, yeah, rendering and I believe, uh, a, a zoning type map. But, so, you Madam Chair, can we maybe turn it over to Mr. Latham?
We'll recognize Attorney Latham. Welcome.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, thank you so much for the, for the board's time tonight. We'll, I'll try to make it as quickly as possible. Um, do you mind if I share my screen and maybe?
Of course. Of course.
Do that now.
Is that all right, Mr. Gilberto? Thank you, Nita. Okay.
Okay. So, um, first off, I want to just direct the board quickly to the North Reading Master Plan. And I'm gonna scroll quickly through to, uh, obviously I've highlighted some areas, but I want to scroll through quickly to the demographic trends. Um, and I'll, I'll read it, but obviously you can see it as well. The growing, uh, senior demographic in North Reading has need for smaller housing types and the demand for this demographic uh, will continue to grow from 2000 to 2010, the population of single person households 65 years and older increased by 44%. And another 9% from 2010 to 2015. There are currently 477 single person senior households and one quarter of them, uh, claim a disability. Uh, likewise on page 11 of the, of this 2020, 2030, uh, master plan. It also notes that, um, the population of seniors in North Reading is expected to double between 2010 and 2030. And so to continue on, elderly households will have difficulty maintaining larger, single family homes because of ownership costs, potential repairs and the work capacity needed to take care of these homes. Seniors may want to downsize to something that is more cost effective and easier to ma, manage. Many of them will can, uh, will want to remain in North Reading, um, but will have difficulty finding housing once they re-enter the market and are subject to the high cost of current rentals. Uh, the group needs a range of different housing types that allows them to downsize and sometimes live off of fixed income so they can remain in North Reading. If not, they will be forced to look to different options in places where rentals and smaller housing types are available. A lack of housing options for seniors also has implications for other demographics in the North Reading housing markets. Um, these include, these households are overhoused and if they don't have options to downsize, this housing won't be freed up for families. Um, so there has been support both in the 2018 and it stated again in the 2020, master plan, uh, for support of housing near the Historic Center. And I believe the 2018 master plan actually noted that there was some support, um, for potentially having more senior, uh, housing, uh, down in the Historic Center. And so it's, it's listed in the master plan, obviously some housing, uh, you know, overarching housing goals. Uh, obviously housing for seniors, provide affordable, appropriate housing for seniors, uh, allows them to remain in North, North Reading. And also housing options, provide a variety of options that increase naturally occurring, uh, and affordable housing. For the board's reference, um, there's goal 8D of the master plan, which talks about potentially setting up pocket neighborhoods. And the one that's probably most significant, um, to what we are talking about. I will scroll down to that for the board's quick reference. There we go, right there. Sorry. Um, housing options are needed for seniors. Um, obviously these housing options should not be limited to, uh, to only within a rezoned mixed use residential main street, but also a different extent within certain, um, nearby smaller residential neighborhoods. And if we could, recommendation 9.3 is to prioritize the development of more housing for seniors, single person households that meet universal design ADA standards. And likewise, um, just quickly scroll down. Uh, recommendation 22.1, um, housing options needed for seniors, young adults, et cetera. Um, so with that being said, um, we have, uh, put together, we've been working with the CPC, for a while now. And for the board's reference, uh, we're actually going to be appearing before the CPC again on March 2nd. Uh, we believe that they are going to be, uh, assisting in terms of sponsoring, uh, this particular zoning bylaw. But obviously it's a work in progress. We, we did meet with FinCom and since we met with FinCom last week, we have actually made a modification. We heard the FinCom basically state that they wanted the affordable housing to be located within the project, within the, the location. And so we have made modifications to the, the, um, the bylaw that was before the FinCom to incorporate that. And I believe the board, I don't know if you've all had a chance to read it, but basically, um, this is it. And so, um, it's an overlay district like many zoning districts in, in North Reading. And basically what it's designed to do is, um, it, it uses a lot of definitions. Most of the definitions that are state and federal law and the Commonwealth, Commonwealth Smart Growth, although this is not a 40R. Uh, and it uses good land use criteria to seek to provide independent housing units for, for persons over the age of 55. It allows aging North Reading residents, uh, who are seniors, options to downsize and remain in town. It simultaneously is designed to try to revitalize and vitalize further the downtown and to preserve the character of the town. And to achieve these objectives, the overlay district is designed uh, so that the senior housing project must consist of four or more acres of land within walking distance. That's 250 feet from our estimation of a public park, public common or public library with at least 200 feet of frontage on the property that would be developed. Specifically 146, 148, 150 Park Street in mine. And it would allow for multiple buildings, including mixed use and a senior housing project, so long as all principal buildings have a minimum site distance of 20 feet between buildings. Um, the buildings do not cover more than 40% of the gross site area. New buildings for senior housing have setbacks of 25 feet from the front lot line, 20 feet from the side and 20 feet from rear and a maximum height of 45 feet. Um, the project has a minimum proposed open space of at least 20% of the total area and new buildings must be in harmony uh, in design with the neighborhood, uh, including use of peaked roofs, uh, and end gables. With that being said, we've actually, uh, appeared before the Historic District Commission and we've received their comments in terms of the proposed architectural plans. And they are actually a work in progress. We're actually working on that. We're going to be going back to the Historic District Commission with revised plans, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. So the senior housing project must also have an onsite senior common area amenity, uh, for the use of senior residents. And there will be elevator for, uh, new multi-floor residential structures, which must also have handicap access. From parking garage, there's a proposed parking garage underneath to dwelling units. And the density would be, uh, limited, so a dwelling unit cannot be more than two bedrooms. And the total number of dwelling units, uh, in a senior housing project does not exceed 50 units. In addition, the applicant for the house, uh, for the senior housing, uh, development must contribute to the stock of affordable home, homeownership units in town equal to 10% of the market rate residential units. And those must be located now as, as we've revised based on FinCom's comments. Um, those affordable units must be located within the senior housing project. We've used basically Commonwealth's, uh, the Commonwealth Inclusionary Zoning Model Bylaw. Um, and basically, um, we've used, uh, affordable housing restrictions in the bylaws and DHCD regulations and, and trying to compose us. So with that, with that said, um, let me see. I'm gonna try to minimize this and go back. Okay, so. This is what we're proposing right now for the location of, of the proposed senior housing overlay district. And obviously this is the library here, as you know, in the town common. It's located right next door to the Police and Fire Department. Um, it's right on Park Street. And as part of the proposal, and this is what we've been in, uh, conversation with the Historic District Commission in regards to, is locating the historic, uh, McLean House. Um, so basically it's on a, um, a field stone and, and, uh, rubble foundation. And so the proposal is to put it on a permanent foundation that gives it more support and hopefully will allow it to, uh, survive for hundreds of more years. Um, and, uh, so that's that aspect of it. Um, and so at this point, um, I would like to turn it over to, um, Craig Seymour, who is here tonight. And after that, uh, Larry Reeves, if he's available. And if Peter has any comments, Peter Ogren, he's here, here as well. Uh, and if you have any questions, please let us know. So.
I think, I think, uh, I think we may have a couple of questions of the, you know, proposal from board members. You know, maybe we can, uh, you know, if anyone has them now, if you, if you, you can ask them, Attorney Latham. And if, if not, maybe you're the individuals that you just identified could too. Um, but I see Mr. Vin, Mr. Studo's hand, Mr. Vincet, Mr. Studo's hands up.
Attorney Latham, uh, nice to see you again. I know that, um, I've listened to your proposal, so I've, uh, I didn't think I was having any questions. I've heard it a couple of times CPC, but can you just, cause you referenced it a couple of times in a change made. Can you please, uh, let us know what the comments were at FinCom?
Yes.
I'm, I'm kind of in the dark with that.
Yes, sir. So, um, basically I spoke with, um, Planning Director Danielle McKnight this morning and we met with FinCom last week. And, um, the big takeaway that we, uh, got out of FinCom last week was that they basically wanted the, um, affordable housing units to be located onsite. Uh, the way that had previously been drafted, there were a couple of different options, which were consistent with, with basically the state's model plan. But basically, um, it would have allowed for some of the, uh, units to be located offsite. And it also, um, had an option for, uh, a payment in lieu of. And so, um, based on what our takeaway from the FinCom was, is that it was pretty clear to us that the members of FinCom wanted the, uh, proposed affordable units to be located actually on the site where the senior housing, uh, project is located.
Do you know how, um, and, and again, maybe because I, I like, I'm, I'm a little bit newer to this, but, so. You know, maybe I missed that because it just didn't come up in CPC and any of those meetings. So before I, can you explain to me how they would have been offsite a little bit more?
Yeah, uh, possibly, uh, it could be through another development or the purchase of other property. It could be located o, off the property through another property's, uh, purchase.
And what did that, um, that suggestion from the Finance Committee and then you, and then you taking, you know, making the changes, what did that do for the, for the numbers that are different than what I've seen at CPC?
Well, what, what we're proposing currently is, um, 50 residential units of which, uh, 10% or five would be affordable units.
Okay.
Previously we had sort of played with the idea of 48 units. Um, but at this point, since we're doing it onsite, we thought at that point economically, it makes sense to, to basically have the 50 units.
Okay, so two, the increase is only two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, okay, that's, that was, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Attorney Latham, uh, does, do any of my colleagues have any more questions for Attorney Latham? No, and Mr. O'Leary?
Just, no, I, I too, you know, since this is the first time you presented it to the board here. I too would advocate the affordability, you know, onsite. So I'm glad that you've incorporated that into your proposal and also into the proposed bylaws. The only other question I have, and again, I'll see how this unfolds and see how the rest of the other boards either endorse or look for modifications, but you know, the concept is pretty good. And but again, affordability, affordable units are key. But as far as right now, is there any willingness on the part of Mr. Wheeler to, to grant a permanent easement for the public safety building? Because right now, we're, we're utilizing part of the parcel for access to the public safety building. And I don't know if there's going to be a permanent easement granted where you wouldn't lose any acreage. But you also wouldn't deny the public safety facility access to the, to its building and behind the building.
I actually was not aware of that, but we, we can obviously look into that. I don't know, Peter O'Grain's here. I don't know, he's the engineer from Hayes Engineering. I don't know if he was aware of that.
He's been around a while.
Yeah. Hello, Peter.
Hello.
Hello, Bruce.
Yeah, I, I was, I was not aware that that entrance actually went over and, and we, we're not showing the topo plan tonight, but I do have a topo and a, and a boundary survey. I'll look into it. I, if, if that paved area goes over it, I, I'm sure we can accommodate, you know. I mean, we don't lose any land area to grant an easement, and I'm sure we'd be, we willing to do that.
If you could just take a look at it, you know, you know. What the actual layout is and what currently is being utilized by public safety personnel and equipment, that would be great.
Yeah, we can do that. And actually, part of our proposal is to, when we put the McLean House on a new foundation, is to improve the site distance. I'm sure you're aware that the site to the public safety building is a bit compromised in that easily direction.
Very good. Thank you.
Attorney Latham, I think if none of the other members have a question, I do have a question. This overlay district that you've proposed, this involves just one parcel that's all owned by the same owner.
It, it actually was three parcels and Mr. Wheeler has now just recently purchased the other parcel. So it, it's a total of three parcels, I think, according to the assessors. But now it is in common ownership. You're right, Madam Chair.
Okay, so it's all owned by the same owner, where you are proposing to, to, for this overlay. And in the, in the language of the proposed bylaw, you are defining the affordable housing and you're, you're, you're following along on our zoning bylaw, which actually the definition is in the very zoning, the very overlay zoning for affordable housing that meets the same definition as hard qualifications for the Boston region.
Yes.
Based upon our region's median income range.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Does anyone else have any questions before we proceed?
Is, is the planning commission planning on doing anything more with the proposing, if we're going to propose this change? Another section of the community to be included in the proposal for the overlay district, are we aware? Maybe Vincenzo, you know, because again.
I can, Rich, do you want to, I mean, do you want to speak on or I, I can, I, I, I think I have the answer.
No, go ahead, Vincenzo.
From my understanding, no. This would not, at, at not current moment.
Because I think it would be worth everybody's while if there's another section or two in the community that would be suitable. It could help assist us in, you know, increasing our affordable housing needs and limiting the impact as far as, you know, the number of units that would be anywhere, so.
Yeah, on the bylaw, you can accomplish that by requiring the specific number in the overlay district if it's permitted, you know, to be affordable. So it's written right, right in there.
Right. And if there are other parcels within the community that, you know, have come to light, then maybe would be suitable for such a proposal, maybe we should encourage the planning commission to take a look at it that way also. If, if all the boards are going to get on board and try and support this.
And I'd like to add too, and Mr. Latham, maybe you can, you, you spoke to it to the CPC multiple times, but can you please speak, speak to the board of why it is not considered spot zoning? Which is something that did come up.
Yes, so basically, it's not spot zoning because it's generally an overlay district. And that combined with the fact that it's consistent with the town's master plan, it's the public benefit that they look at. And the fact you believe that this addresses, it, it doesn't solve North Reading's problems, but it gives a significant silver bullet to some extent in trying to deal with the fact that you have an aging population that is overhoused and they need alternatives. North Reading only has thirteen percent of, of its housing stock is condominiums. This project is proposed to be condominium, so that will increase the, the options that are available, increase the diversity of housing. So we believe there's a strong public benefit because it's, it's hitting some of these very important aspects that the town has actually recognized in its own master plan. We believe also it's a public benefit because it's, for senior housing, it's directly abutting, you know, emergency services. We believe it's going to help, you know, revitalize downtown. And the size of the parcels, it's a, it's a pretty good sized parcel. So for that, for those reasons, we believe that it's, it's a benefit to the town. And we don't believe it's going to be considered spot zoning. The town actually has a smaller zoning district, the residential M district, which is at least an acre smaller than, than this particular district.
Thank you.
Yeah, just since, I mean, it is supposed to be to help our seniors. We do have an extremely fast growing demographic here. I think it's going to be forty percent by the time Brian you talked about. The question is, does this include local preference housing? I mean, it's intended to benefit North Reading. We want to be sure that North Reading people get the first options to get into the affordable and the other units as well. Could you comment on that, please?
Yes, sir. Actually, there is a, a North Reading preference that we built in based upon the comments by the CPC. It was probably within the last month or so. So there actually is a provision in the, that gives preference, particularly for the affordable housing units to North Reading residents to the extent that it's allowed by law. I, I did a project up in Ipswich and Ipswich had a, had a preference as well. It wasn't written into the, obviously, we weren't doing a bylaw change up there, but basically, it was part of, of how it was handled up there and, and it was successful.
Good, thank you.
I just had two questions, two more questions, if that's okay, Attorney Latham. On this picture, I know in our presentation, we saw, I guess, a design, but it didn't quite show how, yeah, we saw this, but, and it, it's easy to picture that, I, I think, because we drive, if we've driven by it over and over again, but how, the river is right behind that, Ipswich River is right behind that. So I would have, how, I haven't seen anything, and I don't know if you can draw, pull something up that shows exactly where this would be in connection to the Ipswich River, because right, it's right there, right? Oh, I don't think this was in my packet.
The, the river is, is, it, it shows on this plan, and you're correct, it's behind it, but there's a significant wetland. The wetlands have actually been mapped. And there's a significant wetland before you get to the river. So this is not even within the riverfront area under the conservation regulations. We're more than two hundred feet from the bank of the river everywhere. And, and we have mapped the, or the wetlands have been mapped. And we're only using the upland areas that will only involve a buffer zone activity as far as the wetlands are concerned.
But does it, but it will go, it'll have to go to the conservation commission for review though, because it abuts the river?
We will, the, the thing that will most likely lead to conservation involvement is an activity within a hundred feet of the bordering vegetated wetland. You got the river and you have the riverfront area, which is two hundred feet from the bank of the river. But then you also have a hundred feet from the bordering vegetated wetland. And so we'll have activity within that area that will bring us to the conservation and bring us into a stormwater management as well. But we've done preliminary soils investigations and, and we've got, you know, preliminary engineering done. So we think we can meet all the criteria that they have set forth.
So I guess what we're looking at, Peter, where, if, if you're able to point out, because I'm I know, it's, I'm trying to, I'm trying to imagine where the buildout would be on this, and I don't know if it, is it shown on this?
No, the buildout isn't shown on this. That's on another plan, Brad. Excuse me, Chris, do you have that?
Yes, I think what I saw was kind of like a PowerPoint presentation, but I don't remember seeing it like a bird's eye view of where the building would be as, yeah, this, I saw this, but.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have that planned, don't you, Chris?
Yes, I'm at, I'm, well, if, if it's on this plan, I'd do.
I don't think it's on this. This is the one that we got today.
Yeah, thi- this is, this is Craig's plan as to the financials. I don't think I have that one, Peter.
Okay, well, the architect has it. I, I think he could share his screen. I, I don't have it on my screen, so.
Larry, do you have it that you can pull it up?
Larry Reeve was on, I saw him.
There we go, now I can talk. Yes, I do have that.
I'm gonna stop sharing my screen then.
All right. See if I can get shared. There we go. This is this is our overall site and, and the green area is really the, what we'll call the development site in effect. The, this rectangle is, is an exist, the existing building, the, the Steel Company building. And actually, if we, I don't know if we can hop back, but in that, that previous plan, that building is located probably in the upper third of, right at the base of the upper third of the overall property between Park Street and the river. That this green area is, is approximately half of the site. I, I want to say, is that about right, Peter?
Yeah, I would say that, that, that the steel building maybe comes down to about half the site. It actually shows on our perimeter plan.
Right. So this, but as far as the, right, the current wetlands line, but is also the, the, the rear parking area, what we'll call it, it's sort of the turnaround and storage and all sorts of fun things that, that happen adjacent to the existing garage building. And we also have the, the four bay garage that's, that's up behind the McLean House, but it, it drops pretty steep and, and significantly down to this back area. But this is essentially a plateau right through here. And we're, we're confined us really to that, that plateau forward to Park Street. The tree line is also is, is approximately the same spot. So the wetlands and tree line are, are kind of the, where, where the white part starts. So if that, if that helps in terms of the, the positioning.
Yeah, definitely. I, that's what I was thinking, that it, it doesn't really show from what we were given today, but it's, it's really right close to the, to the river. It, it's a lot of, a lot, it's a lot bigger of a development, in other words, than just the picture that we saw. That's, that's really what I wanted. I don't know if you have any other bird's eye views of it.
Yeah, actually, yes, as let me just see if I have here. Do you have a sandborne? I, I might have to scroll to the, to the right spot. Find the right map. Before we're about a hundred years here. Full, pulls in fully. I don't know that it does, you know, actually, Chris, this, this may be easier for you. I'm going to stop share. If you can go back to where Peter was with, with the full site. There, there's some landmark lines that we can show. Go back to that site plan. There we go. So this, this is the, the existing building. I might have, have you point this, Chris, with the existing building. We have a four bay garage and the existing steel supply. And the wetlands line runs from, actually, this, the, the bend in the property line behind the four bay garage from right there over to the, the distinct bend on the right side, right there. So that's actually where our wet, approximately the wetlands line is. So you can see that there's still a huge buffer back to where the river area actually is. That's, that's right.
Yeah, the river is actually the subtly bound of the property, save some other little piece of land that went with this, that's across the river, which shows on the plan.
Right. I don't know if that helps or.
I mean, it, it does for me. That, that was really only my question. I don't know if any of my, the board members were wondering about that. But the, the, the overlay would permit the, what you are proposing for a development that's really right close to the, I'm just thinking of this because we have something proposed up the street and it was significant opposition to, you know, have a building so close to the, to the river, which you can understand obviously why the, you know, that would be of concern.
Sure.
And in the other thing that I wanted to ask you, Attorney Latham, is the, in the proposal for, I know you're saying fifty five or over, that hardly seems really, you know, elderly to me. But in terms of what's
I'm there too. I mean, you could qualify for more and more of these things now, you know.
It seems like middle age more to me, but, but the proposal says it doesn't. And I forget what we did, someone, maybe, maybe Steve can refresh my memory, but on the, on the JT Berry, it was fifty five and over two for the same sort of purpose of, you know, addressing the needs of, you know, our older residents stay, staying here, downsizing and staying here. But it, in the bylaw for the overlay proposed, it, it says just, as long as one resident is fifty five or old or over, that complies. And that, I mean, I, I don't know if that's a common proposed language. And of course, you said you've been working already with the, the other boards on this, so.
Yeah, so basically, we're open to what the board's request. When we were drafting this, we basically put it in, in those terms because being a private attorney, we've actually seen people who have been in situations like this and it becomes a hardship because they want to buy in to prepare for their senior years and they aren't able to because either the wife or the husband is not old enough. So, and, and we also put in a two-year timeframe in case somebody passed away because we've actually seen situations where that becomes a hardship for people as well. But we're, we're open to the board's suggestions if you have an. But um we're we're open to the board's suggestions if you have an an alternative.
I mean, I I was I was just noting it. So and again, it's something I that we we received and I'm not sure if everyone's had the chance to kind of dissect and absorb it. So this presentation is certainly helpful. But I I don't know if any of them have many questions.
What what's the um what are you talking about as far as market rate on these things, these units? The trials affordability and what do you anticipate marketing them for dollar wise?
Bruce, you want to take a crack at that if you have any idea at this point?
We we don't have a specific price in mind uh yet. I I I think that um we we look at Martin's Landing and and feel like um it's a sim-
Hope you're breaking up, Bruce.
Yeah, uh we we're we we kind of we don't have a specific price at this at at this point, but as a comparable, we look at Martin's Landing and uh we we feel like we're gonna have a uh much more attractive building and a much more desirable location. So it it would be uh some some percentage above the 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 Martin's Landing pricing, but we really haven't gotten that far into it.
Okay, and then as far as the the sightlines for the entrance and egress uh for the property, I mean, it is a tough spot. Uh have you had any feedback from the planning commission as far as the site plan? And I I don't know what you would do to to enhance it. Uh we can certainly you you need to retain the the Jared McLean House for historical purposes.
Yeah, we 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 actually did a study, a site distance study. We did radar uh speed gun analysis up there and and looked at the eighty eightieth eighty percentile of uh speed and uh we need when we put the new foundation under the McLean House, we're gonna move it. Uh this this plan that you see here uh in the circle down on the left shows how we move it about twenty-four feet to the east and about uh I think it's four or five feet back. If you do that, it's you end up with a inadequate stopping site distance for uh our entrance and actually for the entrance to the uh entrance or egress to the public safety building as well.
Yeah, obviously, if you if you're gonna be exiting the the property and heading westbound, that's that's the danger, you know? Eastbound's not so bad. But westbound is is difficult, but.
Well, no, no, but it the McLean House is blocking somebody turning east.
Yeah, you're turning east. So what I'm saying is someone trying to go west is is where the danger lies, right? Okay, but the planning commission is gonna take a look at that.
It's the westbound car that you don't have uh any real sight distance at all.
Right.
And and frankly, the other uh uh access to this property, we looked at, it's got a terrible westerly sight distance. Uh you really take your life in your hands, leaving the automotive use to come out onto uh the the street there, so.
Correct, yep. I get my inspection stickers there. I have to find a new one. Hey, what what's your timeline too on this, you know, depending on pending approval?
So it we we would go to the 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 June Town meeting and um and then I think we have a six to eight month permitting process with the CPC. Uh so that would take us into early two thousand and twenty-two.
Madam Chair, um I just quickly looked something up and um when when we drafted it, we were looking at the uh the fifty-five, as you said, and that is uh in compliance with federal and state law because they they only require that uh that one person be over fifty-five, but that's just for your for your reference.
I I know that there's another over fifty-five community in North Reading that has had an issue with, you know, the a younger spouse, the older spouse dying. And again, the whether or not the people hardship was placed upon the surviving spouse and having to to leave the facility because uh it's gonna be a while before they reach fifty-five. I don't know how it could adjudicated, but it was going to court, so.
So um Attorney Latham, is there are you um are there other documents you wanted us to take a review of while you're uh going over this?
If if I could turn it over to uh Craig Seymour, he um actually did the presentation before the FinCom to basically show the financial impact. So if if Craig could take over, that'd be great, and I can stop sharing my screen and and Craig can take over.
Thank you, Chris. Uh thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Craig Seymour. I'm a real estate economist and planner that's been working with communities like North Reading throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the country, for that matter, for the past thirty-five plus years. In the interest of time, uh you have my presentation in front of you, which was a compilation of the uh estimated fiscal impacts of the project. Uh and the fiscal impacts are the revenues that would be generated uh through property taxes and other sources, offset by the municipal service costs that would be uh would result from these additional population and the uh employment that would take place within the office component of this. Rather than bring it up, again, in the interest of time, because I know you have much more on your agenda, uh just to summarize what we have, what we've come up with here is that this thing, this is based on thirty uh forty-eight units. It's gonna gen- generate annual revenues of about just under four hundred thousand dollars a year, three hundred ninety-three thousand six hundred. And the municipal service costs for those municipal services that are going to change that are variable relative to the population and employment, which is public safety, DPW and general government uh are about a hundred and thirteen six. So it comes up with an annual positive fiscal impact of about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars or a benefit cost ratio of two point five. Um there's also some upfront uh revenues that will be generated by the town in terms of building permits and connection fees. Those are either used for inspections or flow into the general fund, and the connection fees, of course, go to the water department to offset any costs that they have. That's a fiscal impact. See, economic impacts primarily are more indirect, and it's based upon the spending potential that the new residents will bring to uh to the town center of North Reading. Typically, households uh that might occupy this spend anywhere from thirty-five to forty thousand dollars a year on retail and services. Disposable income, five to six thousand dollars. This is based on on national averages, five to six thousand of that dollars of that spent in restaurants and 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 taverns and eight to ten thousand dollars in food and beverage stores. Some of those that funding, I can't say all of it simply because, you know, people chopping habits are spread far and near. But I think the town of North Reading, with the services that are private, provided by retailers and dining right in the village center, but also out on Main Street, are gonna recoup some of that. So that's a, you know, it's a significant positive fiscal impact or economic impact. But I think also um the intangibles is it adds vitality to the town. It brings people who hopefully long-term residents who want to stay in town can now be near the town hall in the park and helping maintain uh the town's character, which I know is very important to you and everyone else. And it's also a source of volunteers. As a as an elected official in my town, I'm on a board of trustees, uh and I run my cemetery here in my own town. You know how hard it is to get people to volunteer for any of the boards and committees, and having those keep people stay in town and do that, I think, is a big asset, so. I'll end it there and just uh be open to any questions you might have on some of the economic and financial issues.
Okay, do I have any? Mr. Studo?
I have a question. Do we have any data from past projects of how much downsizing happens? And the only reason I ask is because that resident spending right, if it's downsizing, then you gotta take that out. I mean, if twenty-five people sell their single families in North Reading and then move in here, it's not like there's another I mean, it's the same twenty-five people unless you're counting the fact that then, you know, there'd be that chain effect of those twenty-five. I'm just trying to is that is that what you're looking at, uh Mr. Seymour?
It's true. That's it's a very good point, and it could well be uh that some of that money is um already being spent in North Reading. On the other hand, if it's someone who lives on the far reaches of North Reading up on the Andover Line or down on the Reading Line, they're probably spending it in those communities or elsewhere at the shopping malls and stuff. What it does, though, because it's this is gonna be a very walkable location, people are going to, they're not gonna jump necessarily jump in their car and go out and run errands for a lot of the essentials because they can essentially walk down the street and get it. And I think that's uh that's that money that's gonna be, you know, that spending that's gonna be captured by these folks. It's not it's not a big amount of money, but you know, if you take those for the forty-eight uh units here and you multiply that, that supports about eight thousand square feet of retail in total. And all of that's not gonna be in the village center, obviously, uh or on Park Street. But again, it is going to help the the businesses that are there, giving them a little extra boost by having more you know, more um customers nearby who are going to be spending some money there.
Now we just gotta build them some stores.
That's right.
Put the town hall down there.
It was there. It was there.
The Hornets Nest is there and and uh the general store. What's that?
Dunkin' Donuts is down there, you know?
Yeah, Dunkin' Donuts and 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 there there's a huge shopping mall that the Dunkin' Donuts is in.
Okay, do do any does anyone else have any questions? Do my colleagues have any questions? If you don't, I do have a couple, um because I think what we I think I'm struggling with not seeing this sort of superimposed on the site myself and and just because you're presenting it, so I have a number of questions and I I I I feel the same. I don't mean to be offensive, but I feel the same about those numbers. You could pretty much plug in anything you want with those financial numbers. To me, the more concerning thing is that the the density that this might impose and also the proximity to the to the Ipswich Ipswich River. And on the picture that you show, I know you're saying what we got was a picture. It's almost like a PowerPoint presentation. And there's a picture and it's it's really um it shows the, you know, the the front re um I guess re repositioned home and the picket fence and then a development there. I guess it doesn't show the whole thing, though, if it's forty-eight units, so it must only show a very small portion of it. And that I guess that's what I'm struggling with. If if you're looking for su- support, at least from, you know, I'm only one of five, but I would like to see this sort of something showing the proposed buildout. And I'm sure some I'm sure because you've been working with all these other boards that you have that somewhere that you could show it on, you know, the site currently. I I don't think I I've seen that yet. Yeah, I I know we've we've seen the shed and the cars and things like that, but it doesn't really quite show it as it's proposed, and that's what I'd like to see.
Larry Reeves, can you go back to that the 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 plan that has the building superimposed?
Yeah. In fact, I I have a I have a a slightly older.
Yeah, when we were when we were describing it, we talked about all the buildings that were there, but we really didn't talk about the the over the the this building that is shown on there, which is in in white. So Larry, why don't you show our proposed building, which is on this?
Yeah, so it it this this actually shows the majority of our our total site. And in fact, down here at the very bottom is is the Ipswich River. And if I'm not mistaken because we we do have this little standalone piece of our site, I think that the if I'm not mistaken, Peter, the river really kind of flows across the corner back in here. But now now you can see better what what the connection is. We have the public services building on the left.
Right.
And uh the existing garage back here, this is our plateau. The the this uh area is different from the earlier sketch, but uh but the building is generally the same. So our our proposed building, we have have the new new driveway, which is fairly close to the existing entry location. But it does come down the hill. We've essentially come through where the existing four-car garage is down to the bottom uh to this plateau level and have all of our parking under our building. All the resident parking under the building. We do have visitor and and uh some of the commercials spaces up at the front uh at the upper level. But then this essentially from this point and this whole green area back in here is all level uh exists essentially existing level area. And and it's essentially also empty. Um there is some vegetation uh through here, but the majority of this area is actually empty right now.
Larry, when you say it's it's plateaued, is that the topography, as it exists now, or is that after it's been developed?
Both. Uh we're we're essentially leaving it, you know, within a foot or thereabouts. We we I I don't know if we're raising it up a little bit or I doubt that we're dropping it actually. Is that it's it it is right now of just a big flat turnaround area essentially for commercial.
It's it's actually a parking area and it's a it's it's a uh significantly above the wetland. Plateau that's significantly above the wetland.
Okay, so in this picture that you're showing, the um the T, I guess, the sideways T, that would be all of the units?
Yes.
And in in is this proposal for apartment units, condominium units, um townhouses? What exactly are these units?
So this is a two and a half story um flat style units and this this is the the main floor, main and second floor are essentially the same. And then the third floor is um kind of mixed. It'll be model um modeled a bit in in the roof line. So we're we actually from the road, we really have what's essentially a two and a half story building visible. And and it I'm I'm just shift my so let's see.
Adam Chair, it's it's actually gonna be condos?
Yes.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, just to your point before, the rendering that you looked at uh really is a view from the top left hand of this drawing, uh looking at the buildings. Looking back down, so you're seeing the L shape from the top half of the buildings, but not the not the lower part or the the rear part.
Okay, yes, doesn't show the whole thing, in other words.
Yeah, and I I don't know that there's any, I don't know, there may be a spot from quarter mile down to the east that you might be able to look through some trees in the winter and see part of the building, but otherwise, you really won't see the the back half of the building. It's it's it it just is from the road, you have a lot of a lot of other buildings that along the street front that will obscure it completely. And in fact, you really won't see much even of of this this eastern side of the building. I think if you're a neighbor, that's not true. You will see that, but the but as a driving by, it's it's not a it's not a very apparent building.
And uh how many parking spaces underneath are you proposing?
Well, we're we're expecting uh two per uh unit, so we're now I I I think I have ninety in there right now, but uh I'm I'm I'll figure out a way to get my other ton for the fifty units.
And and as far as, you know, visitors coming, you know, what it would how many outside?
See, count them real quick here. I think we have about eighteen out in the uh front at the moment. We have probably have room for a few more than that.
For the uh for the board's reference, uh the the bylaw, the proposed bylaw has one point seven five parking spaces per dwelling unit. I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
It's it's a minimum criteria, right?
Yes, sir.
Just for perspective, when I'm looking at the drawing and then I'm looking at this, what angle am I looking at the drawing from?
Well, I'm essentially your where my hand is in the plan here. We're looking, the the kind of the the view is this this triangle. So we're looking straight into the courtyard. And in effect, standing here, looking right right at the juncture of the the L. So it's kind of split the difference to the two sides. Uh, so it's kind of split the difference to the two sides. So if that, if that helps.
Yeah. It only shows kind of the front half of the proposed development.
And that's all you'll ever see from the road. It's, it's not possible to see the back area.
But so of, of putting a hundred, there's, that'll be a lot more traffic in and out of that location onto Park Street in that area with all the, all the, um, all the parking there. A hundred, you said ninety or a hundred?
Yeah, it's, it's, and, and I know, I think, or, um, the ninety covers our, our units at fifty. Um, but we, we likely will have more. Uh, but it, uh, the, the real traffic is, is essentially the one, one point seven five is actually the, the, the number that would be relevant to the, um, and actual traffic use.
Is, is there going to be any access on the east side of the property, east side of the buildings to get back onto Park Street? I see the one entrance in the picture.
There's not.
No, we, we did talk with the fire department about having, uh, uh, that be uh, a solid place where they could a- access for, in the event of a fire, but it's not designed to be a, uh, a part of the circulation on site. Uh, as it relates to the traffic, uh, the, the advantage of a, uh, an over fifty-five project is, uh, that you have a diverse population. They don't all go to work in the morning. And I know everybody doesn't do that now, but we hope we're going to get back to that before too long. Uh, the, the, uh, traffic is distributed throughout the day. And then also you have people that spend, uh, time away, either people that go south for the winter or people that, that, uh, travel. And so it doesn't generate, uh, the units don't generate, uh, trip bands like, uh, a single family home does. We'll be providing some of those numbers for the town meeting presentation, but, uh, it's a big advantage to have the, the, uh, over fifty-five.
So have you done the traffic studies yet?
We did not do a traffic generation study for this. We only did the safety analysis so far, but, but we will be doing it.
Well, in advance of the town meeting, I, I assume.
Absolutely, yes.
We've been, we've been talking about all the housing and that's been the main focus of this, but the overlay also talks about, you know, mixed use, meaning commercial development of some sort. Can somebody please describe what you're thinking in that regard?
Yeah. So at this point, um, the McLean building out front is Mr. Wheeler's office. And his intention is, is to continue to use that for office space. And right now that's, that's what we're talking about for mixed use, because they are going to be located within the same development.
No other plans within the development itself?
No, not at the moment.
Any intention? Is there any intent to in the future? I mean, you, 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 okay, you're saying not at the moment, but in the future, are you planning to?
Bruce, do you want to, um, do you have any intention?
No, we, 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 we don't have, um, uh, for the foreseeable future, we're going to use that, that, uh, the McLean house as our office. We don't have a plan to, uh, to use it differently. Uh, in, in, in any near term thoughts.
But what's the use currently, Attorney Latham?
It's, I'm, I'm sorry, it's, it's Bruce's office currently.
No, but what's the use of the parcel currently under our zoning?
Um, basically it's, uh, residential, uh, downtown. It's basically the downtown business. It's in the, uh,
Well, the current, the current use is an automotive use and a, uh, and a, uh, a, a steel supply thing. They supply metal decking. I don't think that their uses, I think their uses that were grandfathered. I don't think their uses that are consistent with the current zoning.
Right.
It's, it's in the local business district. So Lu, Luze used to be down on the corner where the gas station is, and then he moved up to that, that long garage building. So he's located there. And then the steel, um, businesses behind him, as I understand it. And then Bruce is obviously in the historic house out front.
Yeah, no, I think just Mr. Warner, it, it contemplates retail, consumer, office, if CPC says it, it's compatible, which it doesn't have to be tied. We're tying it to Mr. Wheeler because he owns this parcel for which the overlay is being proposed. But if Mr. Wheeler sells it, whoever purchases it could do something differently to, you know, in accordance with the overlay zoning.
Right.
Does any, do any of the other, I'm sorry, Attorney Latham, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, sorry. I, I, I was trying to respond, but I couldn't press the, uh, unmute fast enough. Um, so, um, w- we put the mixed use in not only to address Mr. Wheeler's current use of the, of the historic, um, structure uh, for offices, but also because we saw in the bylaws, I, I'm sorry, in the master, uh, plan that the, there was a promotion looking for mixed use. So we, we basically put it in there.
Okay. Do, and does anyone else have any questions? Seeing now Attorney Latham, do you have, is there anything else you wanted us to be aware of or of your team, anything else that you wanted to present?
I do not, but gentlemen, do you have any, uh, anything else you want us to mention to the board?
All right.
Well, we'll, we'll have another meeting with the CPC on the second. Um, and, uh, we'll be continuing to communicate with the Historic District Commission, uh, as well on revising the architectural city plans.
And we're also, um, scheduled to go back to the FinCom on March tenth.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks for, um, coming before us and giving the presentation. And I'm sure if we have more questions and follow-up, that we can communicate those to you through the, through the TA.
Thank, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it. I'm on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. The inevitable has arrived. Our next order of business is the trash pay.
Did we go through, Madam Chair, didn't we go through this presentation or am I thinking of something different? That's our last meeting.
We, we talked about it, but then we had asked if they, if we could hear some figures and projections. I don't know if you recall that, but we, we had asked for some projections in terms of a graduated increase in the fee versus, uh, you know, uh, significant, all at once. I'm pretty sure that's where we left it.
That's right.
So, and we have Mr. Demming who's joining us. Thank you for staying awake, Mr. Demming. And, um, I think, I guess, Mr. Gilbert, is there anything else that, anything else on?
Mr. Clark, the water superintendent, who also helps with, uh, our, uh, solid waste program is on and the finance director, Liz Rourke, is also here. Um, we have, uh, just a couple of slides that I think, um, should have, you should have seen in your meeting packet for this evening that did, were I guess the first attempt to give, um, some, some options for the board to look at. Um, I don't think we had any designs on there being a, a vote or a formal vote um, with regard to this, uh, this evening, but that certainly can get pointed in the right direction, I think. Um, thanks, Mark. I was getting a little dizzy there. So I'll share my screen if that's okay. Chris, unless you want to?
Yes.
I, I don't mind sharing.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead then?
Um, Mark, Mark Clark's with us too.
So as we discussed two weeks ago, I just wanted to go a little recap on what we had talked about. Uh, this is a little history on the fees that have been associated with the trash collection in town. Going back to, uh, two thousand and three, when we had the sticker program, everybody remembers going to stop and shop on Sunday night and Monday night, trying to eat your stickers before the trash came the next day. And then we had switched to, uh, a quarterly and annually fee, um, for, for six years. It was forty-five dollars a quarter. And then it had gone up for another eight years to fifty-six dollars a quarter. Then in FY nineteen, the most recent time that had gone up, it was raised to sixty-eight dollars a quarter for trash and recycling. This is just a little breakdown of, of our, um, billing summary, um, kind of breaking down the, the different units that we have. Uh, as you can see, um, down at the bottom, the, the total number of units that we're receiving revenue from is forty-three hundred sixty-three. There are also a few exemptions in there, uh, alternate haulers, but, uh, that total number comes out, like I said, to forty-three sixty-three. So as you know, uh, last time we had talked, gotten in depth a little bit more about, um, the future of the JRM contract, um, where it currently stands and where it looks to go. Um, as you may remember, uh, they proposed for FY twenty-two is a percent increase, uh, three percent for a year. FY twenty-three, another three percent for FY twenty-four. And then three, excuse me, three and a half percent for FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six. The current disposal contract that we're in with Covanta, um, shows a pretty significant increase. This is like I said, a contract that we're already in, uh, for FY twenty-two, that the tipping fees had gone up, uh, just a little bit more than twenty percent. Uh, the only thing that everybody should remember is that with this aspect of trash and recycling, I'm sorry, we're just trash, not recycling, is that this number can vary on a weekly, monthly, yearly basis, based on the actual amount of tonnage that the town is disposing of. So this brings us to where we need to be for the fees. Um, what we had kind of looked at was three major options. Um, one of them, um, option A was basically designed to keep the stabilization fund as, as level funded as it is now. Um, that kind of entailed bringing up, uh, a decent percentage in the first year and then kind of leveling it out and having a small increase every year going forward. Uh, option two was a, um, pretty significant, uh, increase in FY twenty-two, but would leave, uh, zero percent raises for the next five years after that. Uh, as you can see, that would kind of front load the stabilization fund to try to take care of the added fees later on in, in this big contract. And then option C was, was kind of more of a level funded across the board. As you can see, it was a six point one percent increase every year for the next five years. Uh, the, the issue that, that we see with that is, as you can see, an FY twenty-four stabilization fund would, would drop pretty low. But, you know, we, we put together three different options, um, that we think, uh, it's kind of the way to go forward dealing with the fees.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Gilbert.
Through you. I mean, we did have some conversation about trying to, to break out some component of this that, you know, for example, the municipal and school charges, um, as something that could be perhaps borne by the general fund budget. And I, I think that the feeling was, you know, it's just very difficult for us to figure out what that cost actually is because the tonnage is all rolled into our, um, our regular expenses. Um, so it's kind of a, a difficult expense, as I understand it from Chris, for us to be able to adequately project. And the other, you know, point that we just will bring up is, you know, that, you know, a, a simple review of the budget and the revenue plan over the past few years. You see that there's been some level of subsidy that's occurred, um, depending upon what our receipts are, particularly in those years where, um, you know, where we didn't adjust the rate, but the, uh, the cost went up. But we thought that this kind of puts something on paper for us to start the discussion in fairly short order, um, regarding what the alternatives could look like. Um, you know, my, my preference had been to not see the um, solid waste stabilization fund drop below, um, below a hundred thousand dollars. Um, it, it's kind of tricky to do that because of the amount of subsidy that's required in, in, in year one. And if you want to keep the rate from bouncing all over the place, you, you gotta spread it out. So I, I think the closest example of that is probably option C. But I, I think Chris and I both are concerned that, you know, we have one bad year and only having forty thousand dollars or less than forty thousand dollars and that stabilization fund might put us in a challenging spot. Option B, you know, we're, we're definitely, you know, cognizant of the impact that that will have, um, particularly for those who have been, um, directly impacted by the economic, um, situation that is, is going on here in, in the country. So, you know, I, I, we, we obviously have our concerns about that. And then, you know, when you sort of just look at us adjusting the rate to reflect the cost and relying on that, that, um, keeping a stabilization fund level, you see that in option A, um, as a sort of the, the purest, adjust the rate to reflect the cost, period, you know? So anyway, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any thoughts to Mr. Studo?
Um, just seeing this, I mean, based on what the TA just said and just, I mean, to try to balance the minimizing impact, I mean, I think option A looks like the clear best option to me. I mean, it keeps the stabilization fund pretty level. So you don't have to worry about that scenario where in twenty twenty-four, something happens and we only have, you know, price of, uh, you know, Honda Accord as a backup. So, uh, you know, and also, I mean, that, that first hit of thirteen point four seems high, but after that it levels off. And also most importantly, by twenty twenty and twenty twenty-six, you know, we still have it that we've gradually gotten to a number where it could be more realistic, especially, um, you know, after hearing a couple of presentations and also what Mrs. Gonzalez and she's brought back from the recycling committee, it seems like it is inevitable here that unless there's a one eighty pulled by China, these numbers are just going to keep getting worse from an expense standpoint. So, you know, that's, I mean, I, I think option A, based on that is the best way to go.
Thanks, Mr. Studo. Any other comments, questions, discussion?
And again, what was the, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, the, um, again, Mr. Gilbert, I don't know who's been involved in the discussions here, but as far as, uh, general fund contributions to the tune of, you know, thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand, forty thousand dollars a year, whatever it's going to be, fifty thousand dollars a year, uh, the overriding concern is what? So.
Um, I, I don't, I don't know that it was necessarily a concern. I mean, I, I think the first thing we want to highlight is that in, in, there are years passed when the revenues have not met the expense. I mean, I think just recognizing that is probably the first part of the conversation.
Well, which years when, and we didn't, we didn't use the stabilization fund to, to offset that, to cover it?
Uh, I don't believe so. And I know the finance director's on here. She could probably speak more directly to the, to the, the, the issue in the way that it played out. But, you know, we've had some, again, it may be small, but we've had some result in subsidy that's occurred just by virtue of the collections versus the expense.
That, that's just what, you're transferring some free cash in there to, uh, to cover, cover the cost and, and maintain the stabilization fund? I mean, because we never ran, we, we haven't run the stabilization fund down to zero.
No, no, as a matter of fact, we've, we've only been transferring money in, I, I believe in, in recent.
Right. So, so to, to, to me, uh, part of the reason for the stabilization fund is just to, to assist in the, in the fluctuations. And again, if you're going to be doing it on an annual basis, you can't, you can't do that. You would run it dry. So what I'm asking is, you know, what would be our tolerance level to assist in what this modeling is showing us? I mean, I'm looking at the, the annual costs, uh, a couple of slides back. You know, you, you're talking about things remaining the same for physically a twenty-one, twenty-two, and then a twenty-five thousand dollar jump, then another thirty, twenty-five thousand dollar jump, and then it jumps precipitously, a little bit more, twenty, the thirty thousand dollar, and then another thirty thousand on top of that, the fiscal year twenty-six. So if you're looking to stabilize things, you know, you need a, a thirty, thirty-five thousand dollar subsidy from the general fund on an annual basis in order to, to level things out a little bit more. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't raise the rates a bit, but, uh, you know, again, we don't know what's going to happen in the marketplace, um, what's impacting the costs, you know, five years out from now. you know, again, we don't know what's going to happen in the marketplace, um what's impacting the costs, you know, five years out from now. But it's uh, I I think we just have to get used to the the fact that at some point, and again, maybe with, some people don't believe we're there yet, but at some point, we're going to have to um assist by subsidizing this budget, I believe, you know, so it's, uh because otherwise, it just gets out of hand and and again, adversely impacts the lower users more than the bigger users and so on and so forth. If we're, and if we're not going to go to on a graduated basis, as far as, you know, pay to throw, to me, people need to be able to feel as though, you know, the tax dollars are going towards a portion of this again, putting it back in. Again, I I was around when we, when we had the stickers, when we implemented it. And it wasn't, it was sixty cents at the time, I think. Wasn't popular. But again, it was a pay as you throw, and if you put out three bags, you use three stickers. You can use one bag, you put out one sticker. But then when we went to the the flat fee and everybody pays the same, you know, some people are disproportionately being hit. But now, this is everybody. I mean, because of what the marketplace is and what's happening, what our costs are increasing, you know, maybe the time has come where we should just um assist with general revenues to some degree.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary, um the finance director has her hand up, so I think, you know, she does want to contribute to the discussion. So I'm I'm going to recognize Ms. Rock. You're muted.
Well, I'm gonna have to call in Liz.
Uh, m- m- Mister Demme, can you go back to the slides before that while we're waiting for Liz? So.
The 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 one, one before is what I was referring to, that one there, yeah. In five years, you you've got over a hundred thousand dollar increase.
If I could add my two cents and just um.
Oh, Mrs. Gonzalez.
You know, that it was a comparison done with um other towns. Mister Clock did did some comparable ones around here. I did some myself. And I mean, what we found was we're still not paying what other people are paying. I mean, there's people paying every other week. They're not even getting picked up every week, what these prices are here. Um and we're getting picked up every week. And our uh recyclables are included in that, and they're paying separately for their recyclables. So we really are paying a lot less than most communities are paying. So I just, I mean, I know that it stinks that it's going to go up, but it's going up everywhere and we are still very affordable in our in our trash prices. So, I mean, I don't, I don't feel like we need to subsidize.
Ms. Rock, can we hear from you?
Here we now.
Yeah, we, yes.
Good evening, everybody. So just to go back to um Select Board O'Leary's uh point about the general fund or the tax rate or the taxpayers absorbing part of the sanitation budget. There um annually is a piece of it that does get absorbed through the the operating budget, um which we'll see, you know, momentarily when we review the revenue plan. On the revenue plan, we only um, you know, for FY twenty one have a budgeted revenue amount that we expect to bring in of um one million, one eighty five. And the sanitation budget, as you can see on a previous slide, uh is larger than one point one, one point two million. And I believe it was two years ago or three years ago, you know, there was a discussion that was had amongst the financial planning team when the sanitation budget grew to um over one point two million. And that was for the municipals uh side budget allocation to absorb the additional costs of the sanitation budget within our operating budget. So the trash fee does not one hundred percent cover the sanitation budget. Yes, some years, um we are able to take remaining funds out of the sanitation budget uh that are unspent and transfer those to the sanitation stabilization fund. The past two years, it's only been thirty thousand dollars each year. We have not drawn on that fund in the past two years either. However, I just want to note that the trash fee, even with the increase a few years back, does not fully cover the sanitation um approved operating budget. Uh so I want just to make that known, that it had, the the municipals' revenue allocation has been absorbing the difference between what we collect in the trash fee and what is approved for the sanitation operating budget.
Thank you, Ms. Rock.
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Hurlbut? You're muted.
Um yeah, uh so I think it was in today or yesterday's globe, there's a community, I believe, on the North Shore that has made a recycling of uh foodstuffs, for lack of a better term, mandatory.
Hamilton.
Yeah, okay. And they received, they received a grant uh from the state or the feds to help uh purchase uh trash cans, for lack of a better term, into which you could put your, the stuff that you would normally put in your compost pile. And it is picked up by a compost company. What it does is it takes the the bad head of lettuce and the carrots that are sprouting and the uneaten winter squash that nobody wanted more than one helping of, and takes them out of the trash stream and puts them to some reasonable use, re-composting. Um it it's something that I'm somewhat aware of because uh my daughter, who lives in the Bay Area, uh they have three trash barrels. And and trust me, if you put your newspaper in the green barrel, you're dead in the water. Uh I I understand that uh it's a little bit late to do it for this upcoming contract, but I do think it's something that the town should seriously look at. But it, Hamilton, I believe, did it for a number of years, and it wasn't compulsory. And it was only this past year that they've made it compulsory. Uh but as, if you, if you keep some of those kinds of items out of the trash cycle, then you decrease your tipping fees. And that's a large part of what's driving the increased costs of trash. So I think it's something we should think about. I don't think it's something we can do about tonight, or maybe not even this year. But I think we should certainly consider it as a possibility. There are residents in town that subscribe to a similar individual service where their stuff gets picked up by a composting company of some sort. Um and and I think that, and I believe that they may get some uh, you know, well-aged compost back for their garden. I don't know exactly. But I think it's a worthwhile thing to look into and to think about going forward, and it would certainly help decrease some of our costs.
Not what I was expecting you to contribute, but thank you. That's all right. Okay, any other comments, questions?
Madam Chair, I think Mister Buckley has his hand raised.
Oh, I am sorry. I didn't see that.
Hello, Mrs. Manapelli. Hello, everyone.
How are you doing? Welcome.
Thank you. So I guess I'm here more as a member of the finance planning team. I think, I think I still have some post-traumatic stress from that that discussion that Liz mentioned a few years ago um with the trash fee in those meetings. But um I I just wanted to say a few things. I mean, I think, I think number one, I I appreciate the work here. Honestly, you know, hearing about trash in the news and then seeing the proposed proposal here actually seems very reasonable. I mean, I actually think in North Reading, we have a pretty fair rate for trash. Um to Mister O'Leary's point, I think, I I I disagree with subsidizing, and I think, I think it is a fee that should be paid. But I also think that if there's changes, like, again, if my family uses more and and they're, you know, the board sees fit to say that, you know, you can pay for one can or two cans or three cans, and and there's more for somebody that's using more, that I I would be in support of that too, you know, if if somebody's using more, I hear that. But I I I personally think it should not be subsidized generally. Um I think that as the fees increase, they should be increased. The only thing I wanted to point out was just from the options that you had up there. I agree that option A is probably the best. My my concern, people pointed out with options, option C, the stabilization fund goes way down. Option B, I think the biggest problem is you end up in FY twenty twenty six with only eighty one fifty. The other two have eighty eight and ninety one. And I just worry about, you know, if you, if you do that with option B, you're only eighty one fifty in twenty twenty six, and you have a cliff in twenty twenty seven. And so I don't think that adequately does it either. So I, I think option A is a a fair point. There's an increase, there's a little bit of an increase this year because there hasn't been an increase in years past. And personally, I think that, you know, with a fee that goes up every year, I I think it needs to be adjusted more frequently. And so I think the reason there will be a jump this year is because there hasn't been a jump in in the last few years. And so I think it needs to be adjusted, and then it should be, you know, adjusted every year as as the expense goes up. But just my thoughts.
Thank you, Mister Buckley. Any other comments, questions? Mrs. Hurlbut? Muted. We're still muted.
Uh I keep getting muted and unmuted. I've lost all self-control of the. Um yeah, I have a question. I I guess for Chris and the town administrator. Um we have a a contract for the next year, if I'm not correct, with our current haulers, for lack of a better term. And yet this um forecasts a budget out through twenty twenty six. I'm not quite sure that there's any guarantee that uh the rate might not go up even faster than that. Um I think that this is, this current year, um not necessarily contract year, but this year of COVID, there uh there's been a greater amount of trash going into the trash stream than before because there are more people at home and they're not putting it in the dumpster at work. Uh so I I am, I'm a little bit concerned about spending the stability fund, given that we really only have a one or two-year contract, um and that it's pretty hard to tell exactly where this is going to go. I'll take my answer off the air.
Well, the the proposed JRM contract is a multi-year deal that will take us through fiscal year twenty twenty six with reasonably fixed costs.
Okay.
Um the, and Chris, can you go back one slide to the um the uh tonnage? Nope, yeah, there it is. So, you know, tho- those are also under contract. I think, I think, Chris, that's the last year we were under contract, FY twenty six, right?
For for Covanta, it's FY twenty four.
The, okay, so, so we we've got a couple of years, those last two years are are on there with an assumption on it. Tho- those are areas where there could be a, you know, certainly a spike that could happen. But we we do have a few years of of projections that we're working off of for this. I think the variable, to your point, is the tonnage. I mean, we've seen high usage in the tonnage, you know, it's possible that that could come down in the next few years to our benefit, obviously.
Okay. Thanks, Mister Gilberto. Mister Demme?
Just to comment on Abby's question is, uh Abby, the current Covanta contract, as you can see on this slide, is is FY twenty one to FY twenty four. And the JRM contract uh that we're currently in expires at the end of FY twenty one. So we've been negotiating for a five-year deal for FY twenty two to FY twenty. So that contract uh for JRM is expiring this year.
Thanks, Mister Demme. So the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six annual cost is what this slide is showing us.
Correct.
So we're going to start out twenty twenty two under the contract at the same cost, but then it starts to jump incrementally. There's a pretty significant jump from twenty five to twenty six. Yeah, so they they caught up with what they are, you know, they caught up with year twenty twenty two and year twenty twenty six, basically.
The the big thing to keep in mind for the big jump in FY twenty two on the final slide is if I go back one is, I'm sorry, um is to the increase in Covanta's increase. Twenty two. So the JRM, we don't, the proposal is not that they'll go up in FY twenty two, but Covanta is going up significantly in FY twenty two, which is why we need to make an adjustment for FY twenty two's rates, not based on JRM, but Covanta.
All right. Okay. Any other comments? I don't think it's set for a vote this evening.
It's not, Madam Chair. And you know, one suggestion that I I might offer is maybe we can try to um ease, see if we can do something to ease that jump in year one, relying on the stabilization fund and see if there's any, if there's some other way to spread that cost out without draining it to the extent that it would be drained in year three, I think it is, um on the slide. Yes, thank you, Chris.
You know, I, you know, you hear this, and we did get a letter, I did get a letter from a resident about, you know, and Mister Buckley just mentioned it, you know, well, if, you know, I see the neighbor puts a lot more in, what are we going to do about those people? And it's unfair, I have one bag. And that's really, you know, I don't know if there's been any kind of success with any other community that you've looked at in terms of, you know, handling that, where does a, does a household that generates a smaller amount of trash, maybe only one barrel versus the household that generates the two barrels, you know, and we're also, we're also limited already. We're limiting the amount of trash a household can throw out already, um even with the fee being paid. So is there a way to do that successfully? Have other communities done that successfully? And what is that? You know, okay, you can have one small barrel and we'll charge you half the fee. You know, uh what what it, what is the, and then the household that has two big barrels and fills them to the brim, you're going to pay twice the fee. Has there been any success that you're aware of with other communities handling it in that way?
So, I mean, what what I have seen, that's often connected to a, you know, municipally issued totter. So, you know, one totter versus two, or a large versus a small totter. We're not proposing getting into the totter business at this point in time. I don't have a whole lot of familiarity with something outside of that, other than the pay as you throw program, which I think we've all summarily dismissed at this point. Uh Chris or Mark, I don't know if you've seen either of those, either of the, have you seen either example?
No, I would, I would agree with what you said, either a pay as you throw or the totters, which I think we've both tried to get away from both of those options at this time.
And again, I I looked at a town that's private, but, you know, there are people who just get their trash picked up every other week because they only have minimal trash, and they're still paying every other week what we're paying every week. So, I mean, I know you, you think, oh, it's not fair, but we're still paying less money than they are. So, I mean, if it makes somebody feel any better.
I guess mine is along the same lines as, as Mister O'Leary's in that. It's a, it doesn't seem like a lot, but it's a pretty significant jump for some households to pay that. So that, that's, I think I'm, I'm struggling with that, especially given the year, the year that we've been through, the difficult year that we've been through, where so many of our, the families have been hit financially. So I guess I'm thinking of it like that. How can we sort of buffer the, buffer the increase that we know is inevitable? Okay, we have two hands up now, three hands up now. We'll go to, let's go to Mister Studo first.
So I have a question relative to some what other costs went up. And and again, I'm just looking at, let's, let's look at FY twenty twenty two, which is the biggest jump. Um it's, it's total about. It's total about thirty-four dollars. And again, I'm not trying to minimize the increased cost, but relative to every other cost of living adjustment in North Reading, like, do we weigh that as well? And the reason I say is because from property taxes to just general inflation and cost of living, I'm just trying to see, you know, is it maybe just because I'm looking at it differently, but is there that much of an impact of a thirty-four-dollar increase annually for this, for next year? And that's the big jump, right? And again, I'm asking a question, not to try to minimize that any increase will, you know, could be a burden, but just to put it relative to, you know, there's hundreds, if not thousands of dollars of general cost of living increases that we can't control. So meaning that should we be focusing on something else rather than the thirty-four dollars that this is gonna go up annually next year? That's just a general question to anyone who wants to give an opinion. I'm just trying to get feedback. Because that's what the total is for the year.
I must have been doing my numbers wrong, then.
Well, if it's sixty-eight dollars right now, a quarter, and we go to seventy-seven. Yeah, I mean.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Studo. To Mr. Gilberto.
I was only going to add that, you know, one thing that we can try to do, can folks hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I was just going to suggest that we could try to look at utilizing stabilization funds in year one and then sort of flattening it out over the couple of years and give maybe a fourth option to look at that maybe will address that, the level of the increase. You know, if the board wants us to look at doing that while going into the operating budget and the tax rate, we certainly can look at it in that fashion. But I think at least a good next step might be to just add an option that rather than do something as uniform as we're looking at here, maybe tries to stagger it a bit, utilizing stabilization funds, not draining it, but utilizing them in year one to try to buffer that increase to the extent that we can. I mean, that's an option we can look at, the board wants us to.
Okay.
The only problem with that is it's a one-time cash infusion that you have to make up the difference later on. You know, unless you're gonna sustain it, sustain the infusion, it's a one, right? It's a one-time cash infusion and then you have to make it up in later years, anyway.
So prolonging the inevitable. All right, Mrs. Herbert, you have the last word on this and then I guess we're gonna have to revisit it for a vote at some point. We're just kicking the trash can down the alley, I guess. Mrs. Herbert, you have the last word.
A couple of years ago, I believe, we instituted with our contract with JRM, two barrels per household per week. I don't really think that's policed very well. I think you can drive by, drive around town on trash day and many houses have way more than two barrels. Some have two, some have one, some have none. But there seems to be enough houses that have way beyond what's supposed to be picked up. Initially, when this program started of two barrels per week, I believed that JRM was not gonna pick up anything over that amount. I'm not, it's not clear to me that JRM isn't picking up everything. And it seems to me that if we are putting that much more into the trash cycle and then we are also paying increased tipping fee and it could be less. Now, it may even out. But the bottom line is I think there are people that are being piggy and taking up far more sidewalk space in front of their house with trash than supposedly is permitted. And I think it would be unrealistic to expect JRM necessarily to completely police this. And I'm not sure what you do about it. Mike, have you noticed any of that?
The haulers, and I've had this conversation with Mr. Demme, Mr. Clark and Mrs. Gonzalez, they will, they will restrict it as much as you tell them to. And they will caution you about putting those restrictions in place and the impact and what it will result in for complaints. You know, I had a conversation with the Public Works administrative staff today about, you know, we do have an option for a call-in, so to speak. If you're cleaning out your basement, you can call in, basically give them a day's notice and JRM will put you on the watch list for collections. So, you know, are we more flexible than, you know, some communities might be, especially those that have toters? Yeah, I think that we are. Is it better than where it was in two thousand and twelve and thirteen? Yes, it is. So, you know, it's a balance. I can't describe it in any other way. And it's all skewed right now by the work people are doing on their homes and the cleaning up that's been happening over the past year as well, as we all know. But what I would, would I say, I mean, have I noticed that it, or been told that there's some egregious violation that's happening townwide? No, I think most people are following the guidelines within reason.
It's the within reason that.
And look, I was in a community that we, it was like you couldn't even have the top of the toter open. It had to be totally shut. And we were warned against enacting that rule and what it would mean. And they were right when they warned us.
I realize that it's a difficult situation, but it does seem to me that we, that there are enough people that are throwing out a whole lot more than they perhaps should be. But what do I know?
You know a lot.
All right, well, we have, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to make a decision at some point, but we also do have to move along because we have other business. And I am hoping we can get this wrapped up before another midnight meeting. So thank you, Mr. Demme, for joining us. And.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, too. And we have to go through our, we have to, we have to go through our revenue plan with the finance director, too. So let's move on to the next order of business. Thanks, see you later, Mr.
Hi, Mark, hi, Chris, thanks, guys.
Bye, Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I, Mr. Gilberto, I was just gonna move right into, I know that we had a, we were given the documentation in the share folder. So I was just gonna move right to invite Ms. Rock to speak on the revenue plan, if that's all right?
Certainly.
Revenue and expense, expense plan, twenty-twenty-two.
May I share my screen? I just did a quick PowerPoint so that you don't strain your eyes, even though you still will strain your eyes on seeing some of the numbers, because they're quite small. Oh, crap.
See, thank God, I thought that said eighteen slides, because I can't see now.
No, and they're quick.
Ten, including the cover page, so.
Yes, they're very quick. It's so, you already have seen, you know, the revenue plan that's in your packet and that was last reviewed with the financial planning team on or about February fifth, I believe. So we'll just quickly go through this. This is just what the financial planning team is and who we are and what we do annually. So it's made up of the town administrator, myself, two members of the select board, the chair and vice chair, and the chair and vice chair of the finance committee, the chair and vice chair of the school committee, as well as the superintendent of schools and the school business manager or assistant superintendent of finance and operations. And what we do is we meet regularly, monthly, sometimes even twice a month, especially as we progress throughout the budget process in the fiscal year to review revenues to date, to review the local aid that we are hearing we will receive as a community at the state level, as well as new growth figures and fixed costs and other expenditures that the town has. So we'll quickly go through that. I just wanted to give a brief overview to let everybody know what the financial planning team is and what we do. So we begin each fiscal year. Typically, you know, we'll start meeting August, but nothing really has developed then. And really, when the first initial draft of the revenue plan is developed is around November and then it progresses from there. So we continue to have ongoing discussions with the financial planning team. We meet monthly and we continue to adjust the revenue plan as we work through the budget process. So one of the items that, you know, will need to be adjusted will be the trash fee that will offset the municipal's sides revenue, which we will see. So that's one item that will continue to be adjusted. Another item that continues to, you know, wait in the wings and we typically don't hear about until the end of February is what our health insurance increases. So, you know, there's, there's things that we wait on throughout the budget process that don't come right away. So just a quick snapshot from FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two, the tax levy, FY twenty-one is all actual and, or I should say, to be actual. You know, new growth is actual, the tax levy is actual, the debt exclusion is actual, unrestricted in chapter seventy, you know, those are what the final state's budget was for state aid and local aid to the town. You know, give or take, those should be actual. This is a old MSBA, former SBAB reimbursement that we receive, local receipts and other financing sources. And we'll go see, and on the next few slides, what actually local receipts are, you know, motor vehicle excise, license and permits, meals tax, those type of things. So this is our estimated local receipt figure after we set the tax rate. So, you know, we went to town meeting with a higher number. This is the amount adjusted after we set the tax rate. Other financing sources would be, for example, a transfer from the debt capital stabilization fund or the solid waste stabilization fund to offset those operating budgets. We move forward to FY twenty-two. We have our adjusted tax levy that rolls forward from FY twenty-one. We have our estimated new growths and it's broken down by, you know, regular new growth, which would be additions or remodels, complete tear downs. And then we have our new growth associated with Pulte Homes, one oh four Lowell Road. We have our debt exclusion, which is made up of various items over the years that have been voted, you know, but mainly it is for the high school, middle school project. A lot of our older projects have dropped off, but we still carry, say, you know, the police station is an example, that was a debt exclusion. Then we go to our state aid figures of unrestricted in chapter seventy. These are what we're hearing as of right now. This is an item that we always continue to watch until the final state's budget is approved. Local receipts, this is what we're estimating right now. And the next slide, I will point out just, you know, two local receipts that we continue to discuss and watch at financial planning. And other financing sources, as I mentioned, would be a transfer from the debt capital stabilization fund, the cell tower fund, those type of things. So. So the revenue plan, I just went over, you know, the top part briefly, you know, with our levy limit and new growth and broken out and our debt exclusion. I spoke about the first two line items for state aid, chapter seventy and unrestricted. We also have smaller state aid items, veterans benefits, which is reimbursements for veterans benefits that we give out as a town that, you know, there's a look-back period on that reimbursement from the state and, you know, other small items that we receive. So total state aid, total taxes are listed on this sheet. I broke it out. You'll see local receipts and other financing sources on the next slide, just so that we could somewhat see the numbers. So as I mentioned, under local receipts, we are continuing to watch motor vehicle excise and meals tax. Those are two areas that we, you know, want to make sure that we would be able to achieve those revenue figures that we're estimating for FY twenty-two. And the motor vehicle excise largest commitment goes out annually around this time and it's going out the twenty-sixth, I believe. So that is our largest commitment and then, you know, it's due within thirty days. And we'll know probably, you know, mid-April, how much of that commitment we have collected, how much we'll have to go on demand and warrant and so far from there. You know, we hope that that is a realistic number for FY twenty-two. And like I said, we'll continue to watch it. Everything else we feel fairly confident with. You'll see that investment income, how we've talked over the years, from investing, the sale of town-owned land from one oh four Lowell Road, that CD value has dropped. We also have dropped what we include in our budget and the access revenue that we achieve from that CD that we have the fifteen million invested in, it goes and turns into free cash annually. And also, interest rates are down dramatically, not so much for that CD, but for our other money market accounts and savings accounts. The other area is meals tax and it's just kind of an unsure number. You know, restaurants are, you know, getting business back, things are picking up and we hope it continues that way. So, you know, we're gonna leave it at two hundred and thirty thousand for now. But I just wanted to point out, those are two areas that, within financial planning, we continue to discuss and monitor. And then we'll move it to other financing sources. And as I mentioned, sample financing, other financing sources would be the transfer from the debt service stabilization fund, which is transferred annually to offset the debt service budget. And that transfer cannot exceed a non-exempt debt service. So that's why it's held at one point two million. Last year, we were able to get a little more out of it, but right now it's holding steady at one point two million. And then we just have debt exclusion from years past on a batch, on the bachelor elder school bond premium that had to be amortized over the life of the bond. And again, that amount offsets the debt service budget. And then transfer from cell tower. We had a one-time extra transfer last year of two hundred and fifty thousand in addition to our annual three hundred thousand from the cell tower account. And we cannot do that this year, their balance is just not, not available. And the health insurance trust fund, that was the remaining balance in that fund. And that was due to Medicare Part B that we were receiving and now we no longer receive those reimbursements. So total general fund revenue for FY twenty-two estimated is seventy-two million. Moving on to expenses, you'll see our fixed costs and then you'll see employee benefits details. And it's broken out by, employee benefit detail is broken out by school and municipal costs. And you will see that right now, we have, under fixed costs, the capital improvement plan put in from raise and appropriate for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Last year, we had to pull that out and fund very few capital items and those items were funded with free cash due to, you know, the economic situation and the unknown for what was going to occur in FY twenty-one. You'll also see that the snow and ice deficit has been put back in. The snow and ice deficit was taken out last year and it was covered by, I believe, a small amount, a small piece of it was covered by free cash last year. And it was not needed to be raised on the recap. And you also see that school and municipal retirements were pulled out last year and those were funded one time by free cash, but they are back in this year for FY twenty-two. So one area that I want to just point to is the PFA health insurance contingency. This amount of one million is listed there and it's assuming an increase to the health insurance budget of seven and a half percent. This is the offsetting piece for any new members that may not remember. The offsetting piece. That helps us reduce our health insurance budget and has been very successful over the past. Four years now, Mike, three years, um. Three or four years, I think, you know, um, and it's been very. Very successful um in achieving savings for the town as a, as a whole and have being. Giving us the ability to put away those savings in a stabilization fund for both the employee and the employer, meaning the town. Um, so that when we are hit with a really bad increase here, we can then. Use some of those to stabilize the health insurance budget. Quickly moving down, um, you know, county retirement, it's an annual assessment, it's broken out um by school and municipal. Workers' comp, you know, annual costs, um, health insurance, as I mentioned, health insurance, we are carrying a seven and a half percent increase. And it is just about this time that we will be learning what our true. Increases from our uh health insurance provider, so that, you know, you'll be hearing about that within the very near future, I am sure. And that really are the major, you know, drivers of the employee benefits um. Budget and I will quickly just show you um the. Municipal allocation and the school allocation. Now, these are 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 fixed to where we were. Um, last or or the current fiscal year, and so they've just rolled forward. They may not be final percentages for both the municipal side and the school side, that's to be determined. And that's another piece of how we continue to have discussions, you know, at financial planning. To go over how, how things are washing out and what the municipal's budget, you know, is uh presented for FY twenty two. And, you know, the town administrators, you know, recommendation and then what the, the school department's FY twenty two operating budget is and. And their recommendations. So this all gets, you know, uh discussed and we come out. With some resolution at the end, every single year we do. Um, so these are just there. Uh, you know, don't take them too hard, don't take them written in stone, but that, these are our starting point. And, you know, one area that I was speaking of is the trash fee, the one million, one eighty five. So the sanitation budget, if you looked back for FY twenty one, is greater than one point one. Million or one point two million. So, and you can see that going forward for FY twenty two, it's gonna be one point three million. So just to keep in mind that the municipals' revenue allocation was picking up part of the difference. Alrights. Um, and then just, this was the budget distribution, so total general fund revenue, as I mentioned, you know, seventy two million. Fixed costs, as we saw, which was the capital plan, the PFA contingency, um. A, the snow and ice, the retirements, those are the fixed costs. And then the employee benefits budget is um, the. County retirement assessment, the health insurance, the Medicare, the workers' comp, the general liability, those are. The employee benefits budget. So the fixed costs are not. They're deducted right away from the revenue figure, they're not broken out amongst the municipal allocations. And then just quickly, major fixed cost drivers, uh, the fixed cost total. Um, eleven million five approximately, health insurance budget, as I mentioned, we budgeted seven and a half percent increase over FY twenty one. County retirement is a six and a half percent increase over FY twenty one, Medicare, four percent increase over FY twenty one. Workers' comp insurance and general liability, three percent increase over FY twenty one. Snow and ice is just a hundred percent increase over FY twenty one because we didn't fund it within raise and appropriate, it was funded by free cash. And then the regional school assessment is going up almost four percent over FY twenty one. Um, so those are just. Some of the major fixed costs. And as we go through the budget process, you know, we'll have slides of some of the. Municipal major cost drivers within the operating budget. So we, we talk about, you know, some of, we pull out some of the bigger cost drivers. As we go through um the budget process. That is all I have. Um, and you have the actual revenue plan, so you can, you know, review it, I will um. Put this presentation in tonight's uh meeting packet and share file as well, so you have this. And, you know, this is just a starting point. Um, it seems like. You know, you may say, well, we're already at the end of February, but there's so many things that. That change for us. So, you know, when we get to April, we're in a better, better position to really tell you. What we're gonna expect.
Thank you, Ms. Roar. Do I have any questions? Anybody have any questions?
Uh, what about the reimbursement for the COVID stuff? Where is that gonna be factored in or?
So.
Are you considering it a wash, you know?
Are we, are we speaking about um the CARES Act funds?
Yes, yep.
Yes, so the CARES Act funds um sit in a grant fund. And so they are not part of the general fund and the general fund expenses that have been incurred. Um, due to COVID nineteen have been moved and um are offset against the funds that we receive from. Uh, reimbursement. So we submit reimbursement for the expenses that we have incurred. So. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, some of those expenses though include uh time spent by our administrators or.
Yes.
Department heads, uh, which we have factored into the general budget anyway.
Yes.
Um, there's no additional compensation that we're putting out. So some of our compensation for. Uh, salaries and things that are. Being subsidized by the CARES Act, which would free up. Additional funds.
That would be ref- reflected um at with surplus, um, you know, unspent. Uh, salary budgets at the end of FY twenty one and then that would roll into free cash.
Right, okay, that we're not, uh, so you're not throwing that into. Miscellaneous, not recurring, non-recurring or some other place?
No, that's not how uh we, I mean, we can amend the operating budget and.
I just, just so we're actually getting a true picture as to, you know, what we're gonna have for surplus in order to help plug the holes later on in the budgetary process. Um, again, it is, hopefully the non-recurring, I don't want to say that. Uh, be prolonged too much more. And again, there, there appears to be. More federal money coming. Shortly, you know, particularly for states and cities and towns, so.
Yes.
So then that certainly offsets part of our operating budget of both sides of the equation, including the school department. But um, so therefore it should free up some. Surplus cash moving forward into the next fiscal year. I would think.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't free up cash, it just generates free cash and.
Well, that's right, it's, it's, it's poor terminology in my book, but it generates free cash. Uh, and again, then I understand the, the delay in that, but it's also something that we should be able to um. Anticipate to a certain degree. I just don't, I just looking to get a sense as to what, what we think that's going to be.
And I can give a report at either the next meeting or the following meeting, whichever agenda doesn't have, you know. We're not consumed with reviewing budgets, um, but I can tie that in as well to give you an idea of where we stand to date. On um, say, surplus salaries within the town administrator's budget, you know, um, how much? How of, this is just an example, it could be from the finance director's budget. How much we've moved to the CARES Act grant fund. I can, I can give you a, a listing of, of what expenses we have moved. To the CARES Act grant fund, if that would be helpful. Keep in mind that um. From March to June of last year, that would be last fiscal year. So some of those expenses, we've been re, we were reimbursed for all. All of those expenses that we, you know, submitted for reimbursement and those were moved off to the grant fund. And that generated free ga, free cash for, for the town. Um, so then this, this. Batch would be from, from July to um December and.
That's good. I think it's important for us to kind of recognize that because it's not gonna be recurring. And it's not that our salaries of our employees and benefits are gonna go down at all. So at some point, two years out, we're going to have to pick up those costs. Through a normal revenue stream. And I think we need just be cognizant of that.
Exactly.
So it might be helpful just to. Put it on the, on the radar screen, so that looking forward. You know, it's helpful that we get, we're getting the help and the assistance right now because we need it. Um, but you know, part of it is not gonna be recurring and the cost's not gonna go away.
Right, right. You know, and some of the cost. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Um, I was just gonna mention some of the costs, you know, uh, especially for, say, public works, public safety. Um, you know, those costs did increase in their budgets. Um, because of backfilling and, and things like that. Um, and then. Many of the expenditure purchases, not so much personnel costs for general government. But um, you know, buying of the air purifiers and the sprayers and things like that were. Unexpected unforeseen expenses. So it was very helpful to receive, you know, reimbursement for those expenses as they were unbudgeted. Um, but as you mentioned, you know, the, the town administrator's part of his salary for his hours spent on it, the health directors. Um, hours spent on it, those items, uh, the excess, you know, spent on COVID. Are reimbursable. And like you said, there was no additional compensation for those hours. So, you know, that. Did get moved off to the grant fund and at the end of the fiscal year, we will see. A surplus within those budgets that have spent time on COVID. But then on the flip side, you know, um. Some, not necessarily for like police and fire, you know, those will get, those are moved off. But there's not a necessarily, uh, if we have to, the person is quarantined and we had to fill. You know, it's, we still pay for the person that was supposed to work and the person that was filled. That shift, that's the person that gets, gets moved off to get reimbursed. So. Um, the excess cost would be, but there wouldn't be the, the same offset like you would see in the TA's budget, if you understand what I'm saying.
I do, no, I, I just, I just think it's important to identify and then say, okay, really, what is the? Uh, what, what are we gonna be carrying forward without any reimbursement going forward because?
Right, right. I mean, we're still gonna have expenses.
Right.
You know, uh, the cleaning expenses and things like that. That who knows when that is gonna have to end and the reimbursement as of right now. Isn't there, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, we do, we, we are keeping track, um. The best that we can of all, every possible thing that we can think of that is COVID related.
Yep, that's great.
Anyone else have any questions for the finance director? Okay, so we'll have you back soon.
Well, you will see me for every meeting for, from now until probably June, right?
So, well, thank you.
Yes, thank you all.
Okay, so let's move on to our next order of business, which is the town administrator's report.
I have no report.
Thank you. Okay, then no, any questions? Now, next order of business.
Any questions or no report?
Doing all the new business right next to board member reports because we can kind of kill two birds with one stone. So go ahead, Mr. O'Leary, anything?
Uh, nothing new on the board member reports.
Alright.
I'm also there, but, but I do have something on a, on a new business that I think we should um. Just be aware of and, and maybe invite uh some people from Redding Municipal Light to come in and chat with us about. Uh, I don't know if anybody's aware of, uh, it's been brought to my attention. Um, that they've made some investments in uh biomass energy. Uh, fuel, future fuel plant that's being bu, built out in Western Massachusetts. And, you know, we should be concerned as to, um, it's a long-term agreement, like twenty years. Uh, I think we should be concerned and should be made aware as to um contracts they're entering into as to whether they're. In everybody's best interest, let's put it that way. We, we have very good rates, Redding Municipal Light has done a good job of. Uh, maintaining low rates for us and we're probably way below like on the trash stuff. Uh, neighboring communities as far as what we pay for our, our electric bills. But by the same token, you know, what are we doing at, at what cost? Uh, it appears as though the executive director down there has entered into this agreement without necessarily uh significant input. And no awareness on the part of the. Um, citizens advisory board and or uh. Uh, the full municipal light board. Uh, so I, I think if we could have them invite them in. To uh, to discuss, you know, what they're doing as far as from an environmental standpoint, clean energy. Uh, it's, you know, I, I think it's important. Addition to that, you know, supposedly we're supposed to be buying into. You know, clean energy deals, but they keep selling off the, the recs, the certificates. So actually, we can't claim to be a clean energy community and we're a party to it. So I think if we could invite. Our representative to the, to the uh. The team down there plus um the executive director, just to come in. And again, I, I don't want to take away from they're doing, they're doing some very good things, you know, obviously. You know, energy efficiency, promoting heat pumps, electric vehicles and things like that. So I want to applaud them for that. But some of these other long-term major. Contractual obligations, um, I think we need to be made aware of and weigh in as to whether or not we think it's appropriate. And, um, you know, just put them on the agenda for half an hour in the not-too-distant future because uh. Apparently they signed the contract, but you know, when the, when the plant is gonna be built, they may have an opportunity to get out of that deal too. But I think they need to be more transparent, make their, people like Town and North Reading, who's a major. Portion of their business aware as to where they're getting their energy from. So I'd request that uh we put them on the agenda, invite them up. To uh have a discussion with us.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
Do you think we can do that in the, uh, too distant future?
We shall see, we're getting, we're, we're putting light agendas and we're, we're here till midnight. So I think if we're giving them a. Half an hour, it's gonna have to be on an agenda that we're, we can uh, you know, we have extra time somehow.
They also have the uh, time is of the essence in relation to the contract that's been signed. And whether they're doing things that are really in everybody's best interests. And while we may have low rates, you know. Someone has said to me, you know, at what cost? And, and I think we shouldn't ignore it, I think we should be informed. And I think um the public has a, has a right to know and they have an obligation to be transparent about it.
I'm surprised they didn't bring it to our attention themselves because they usually do come in with no.
They didn't bring it to our attention and the uh executive director down there signed the contract without getting it approved through the normal course of action. Uh, that, that would take place. So I think that, uh, you know, we have an obligation to hold them accountable and uh. And ask them to justify it, that's all. And maybe this reasonable justification for it, maybe there's an honest difference of opinion in relation to. Whether investing in biomass energy is a good idea or a bad idea. But you were talking about, you know, long-term. Impact and you're talking about the contract that they signed, is that the single largest municipal light company to sign into this agreement? Where most municipal light companies decided to opt out and not get into it. So it's uh.
So maybe we reach out, we could have the TA reach out uh for some more information from them. You know, regarding the transaction and.
And, and also, you know, how are they gonna be, they continue to claim to be, you know, clean energy. When they continue to sell off the recs because uh, there's all sorts of uh. Opinions now coming from the Attorney General's Office and the federal government state stating that basically you can't claim to be a clean energy. Producer, if you sell off those recs. So it's. You know, I, I just think it's very important from a. Environmental standpoint, future standpoint, and a direction that they're taking. Now, they're an elected independent board down in Redding. They have a citizens advisory committee that they're not. They have a citizens advisory committee that they're not keeping well informed. And I think, uh, the customers, the one who are using the energy should have a say. In relation to what do we want to be paying for? And what do we want them investing in and where do we want our energy to come from? And, uh, timing is of, is important and, uh. So I think if the town administrator could reach out. Ask for more information and ask them to come and give a brief presentation to the board as to what they've done and why they're doing it. I think it would be important and enlightening.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Anything else?
Can we have the administration do that?
Well, we just said that.
I wasn't sure.
No, he, he was actually nodding his head.
That's great. Very good. Other than that, I'm, I'm good. Thank you. Other than, other than, uh, I think a lot of us were notified that the management company over at the, uh. Stop and Shop Plaza are forcing cars stationary out of business after 58 years. I think it's. An awful situation. Um, I think something needs to be said publicly that, uh, you know, as we try and support our local businesses who have been struggling. Here, but we've got a long-term, um, small business that's just being driven out, uh, by a management company, not even the owners, but a management company. Uh, who doesn't even reside here in the community. And I think, uh, I think it's a terrible disservice to, uh, the cars. I think it's a disservice to the community because they've been good longstanding members. They live in the community and they've been longstanding 58-year member of the business community here. And I think it's. Tragic, unfortunate, and it shouldn't be left unsaid that, uh, I think it's a disgrace. So. Look at that now, I'm sad.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Mr. Studo?
Yes, um. Two brief things. One, out of the last ZBA. Pulte Homes went in front for the project to, to add the second story, the fifth story to the four buildings that they're building. And the hearing got continued. However, they did make a concession on 10% affordable housing just to keep the stock level. Pretty much it. There was some public comment about it. It seemed that, uh, most of the complaints, again, as I mentioned before. Were for. Elevator parking, but I think that again. From a zoning bylaw issues, I think it was made very clear that the hearings continue, there's going to be more. Uh, they're going to come back with some information for the ZBA, but in the essence of what the ZBA is ruling on, the parking and elevator really. That discussion's really not, uh, coming into play, meaning they, it's a consideration, but it's not. So that's kind of the gist of it. Um, and again, I think it's been continued to March 11th, if I'm looking at the calendar correctly. And if I'm off that, my apologies. So Bruce Wheeler, I don't have to give an update. Thanks. We talked about it for 40 minutes, so I can move on from that. And then the other thing that came up. On the CPC was that Abacus presented. Just some of their per, you know, findings and what developers said. Uh, conversation is going to be continued. I can give you in a nutshell what it is. Um, as of right now. Uh, in my opinion, um, from what I gathered and the report is available for anyone, there's a whole folder on it. I mean. There's still a lot of work to be done. It seems that the next step would be to talk to the property owners. Um, but more importantly, what I can report back to the board from what I heard is that. I mean, right now, i- it's just not a, um, uh, thank you. Maureen said that, uh, ZBA meeting was, uh. To March 4th, not, uh. The, the 11th.
I was going to correct you, she beat me to it.
Thank, uh, thank you for that. So, um. So although, let's see here, yes, uh, that's why my calendar was off. Thank you, Maureen. Um. So really, it's just a continuing conversation on the Winter Street and what Abacus said. Uh, you know, however, at this point, it just seems that until the discussions had with the property owners, there's really the. There's really nothing else to really discuss. You know, so that's kind of, um. You know, that's it. Unless somebody has any more questions, I can elaborate even more on either the Pulte or the Abacus.
I think that's good. I was actually, I did have the opportunity to sit in because I wanted to hear on those three and I was. A little bit, I was actually more than surprised that as this study was funded with, um. The, the, the study was intended to. Be a meeting of those property owners to determine whether or not they wanted to. Buy in or tie in or, you know, have any involvement in wastewater treatment plant and very little of what I heard. Of that presentation the other night had anything to even do with. Property owners. So it was quite a surprise that they haven't even connected with the property owners at this point. Or, or a butters, it was a gentleman who appeared and said that he's heard nothing about it. And I also think it's. Really, that should have been the starting point. In my opinion, you have people that in the parcel that they've redesigned. In their proposed redesign, they have people live there. There's a, there's a, and a, a group of residents that live in that. In that, uh, there was no, nothing in the presentation about. The costs associated with relocating those residences. Kids that attend school that live in that, that, uh, par- parcel. The, um, the mobile home parcel. I mean, that, that, we have residents that live there, that, that, that. I just don't even understand moving forward with the design when you haven't even tied in. The people that own the land that we're even talking about. So I was a little, I was more than surprised about that. Um, and, and the fact, fact of, is there a potential? Taking that's going to need to take place, eminent domain taking if these owners haven't even been. Talked with. So I think there's a lot of things that are. Putting the cart before the horse in terms of that. So it was a little bit of a surprise to me. So there was very little about. A treatment, a water, a wastewater treatment plant there, so. But that is just my opinion of it, but I'm glad that they did. They, they were like us. They met for a long time and taught. They give a lot of thought to a lot of the things that they're reviewing. So that was a good meeting to, to sit in on. Um, so thank you, uh, for, uh, the updates. Mister, Mister Wallner?
Yeah, I, I did attend the Abacus CPC meeting as well. And I do think it's in the right order, the way it was presented, because the wastewater was. One of the original Abacus meetings from the very beginning, it was like very clear that. You know, for $3 million, you can put in a packaged treatment plant that would more than take care of all any potential development in that area. So that was like. Good news upfront. And then the rest of the focus has been trying to create what the project might look like. Because it's really hard, when EDC had their meeting with the business owners and landowners. Before, there was no plan to put in front of them. And so it was kind of at the end of the, end of the EDC meeting, it was like. Well, what would you like us to do? You know, tell us what you'd like us to do. And nobody really knows. So you really had to go through. Creating a plan so that you can show the landowners, the seven landowners, what this project will, will look like. And if they have any interest in moving forward. And so we are at the right time to be talking to the seven landowners. With something tangible to show them based on, you know, a good year's worth of work, trying to put a plan together. So I think it's actually. This is the right time to be looking at this and getting them involved.
I, I don't. I had one thing to both your, your thing, because, because one thing and like I, you know, I, I think this is a discussion for a different time, but. Let's call the plan what it is and anyone can go see it from the cells. It's a developer wishlist. Where in reality, and anyone who says different is not reading what I read, where in reality, a developer. There was a conversation had with developers who came up with. That Abacus said these 10 things need to happen for this to work on its current form. That, that was the presentation. So I'm not saying that it was a bad presentation, but I just, I don't want to create this false narrative that the town is ready. To pony up and bend over backwards on 10 different points and spend money left and right. Just to make this happen. Because at the current form, that's the only way a business owner is going to get it done. And that's reality. And, and there's a bunch of stuff there. So I, you know, for a different conversation, I can bullet point go through everything Abacus did because I've been reading everything Abacus put together now. For a month, almost weekly. So, I mean, if we're, you know, I, I'm not saying that we shouldn't have the plan, but. Let's call it what it is, that it's a, what else can we give you, Mr. Developer? Can you please come to town? We beg you. That's really what that presentation was. So let's just not go overboard and say it was an awesome thing.
I, I didn't say awesome and I, and I think it has challenges, but I do think there is a lot of community interest in seeing this project go forward. We've seen.
And I agree with, I, I, I'd like something there too, but I, I mean.
It, it is in our, it's our duty to, and CPC has embraced this to. Bring forward this, this, this plan, this development and to bring it to its end, no matter what the end might be. All I ever wanted from the very beginning was for this plan to have a seat at the table and have a chance to be exposed. It's getting exposed. It's good. There's challenges, there's no doubt. There's always going to be any kind of public-private project, there's going to be challenges. I don't think the challenges earn some out of it. Um, but I do think the town also has to recognize that there is a lot of community will or has been expressed in the past. To see something like this happen. And there might be some spending we have to do to make it happen, that's part of the deal. But there, there also could be substantial benefits to the town for years and years to come. And just the last note I'll say about that is what Warren said, the Chair of the CPC has said, is if we don't push forward a plan. And try to bring that forward, then we're going to end up with piecemeal. We'll end up with a piecemeal project that we'll never have. It'll always be, uh, you know, hodgepodge of, of, of development in that area because people start doing their own things. We already know one person wants to do their own thing. So it's a chance for our, to us embrace, to plan for the future, to embrace the future, to get community involvement. And if at the end of the day, the town doesn't vote for it. Then that's the way it is.
And, and I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that perspective. You've been in the meeting, but again, it's something where. I think we need to define public and private partnership. The, the town right now is trying to facilitate. That's what my understanding that the CPC is trying to do. Asking the town, but when you say public-private partnership, that to me says public money. And I feel that the notion that I think it is just, unless that's really what's on the table, I don't. I think we should be very clear that we, that the CPC has never once said that we're going to pony up money from our pocket because. That, that's just not, that's just not where it is, unless I'm wrong. But I've been listening to the meetings like you, Rich.
Not there yet. We're not there yet.
But we're not, no, but, but, but hold on, it, but that's wrong because if, if the. If the CPC is going to now go and put the property owners together. That, there's going to be a bigger discussion before the property owners have said, hey, the town might pony up their own wallet. That's. That's a big problem. So I just feel like public and private needs to be defined.
I guess it's a strategic discussion that happens before you have the open meeting.
Uh, okay. I think we need to move on, but I, I do think it should, I mean, I think the bottom line is not one single portion of those parcels. Is publicly owned. So I don't even think you need to get further to define public-private. They, the redesign was of all, of, of, a group of parcels that we, that we don't even own. So. It doesn't, did make a lot of, lot of sense, kind of the rerouting of the, of the study, but. But let's move on. Mr. Wallner, you have other, do you have anything else in terms of your?
Just two other things.
We can debate this for another hour and I think.
At least an hour. I'm not weighing in because I don't want to continue it for now.
We're going to have to put this as an agenda item apparently, but you know, anyway. Well, I'm sorry for interrupting you.
No, it's okay. It's an agenda week. I mean, it's like a big, it's a big project and there's a lot of factors that have to be thought about. Let's just end it right there. Um, uh, on the cars note, uh, Steve O'Leary, I will let you know, I'm in direct contact with people who are on the grassroots level. Are contacting the landlord out in, I think it's Ohio or something like that. They're writing letters, they're calling them. And they're petitioning them to try to, you know, help out cars if they possibly can. Um, so there is a grassroots effort going on right now. And if anybody wants to get involved, they can contact me. I can put you in contact with people who are doing that. Um, and then I had last week. Um, I met, we, I said the last meeting that the bike trail, the recreational trail was hitting some hurdles. We did meet with the DOT. Uh, last week, um, DOT has many, many different rules, guidelines to get their money to fund. They have a lot of. Rules and regs. Um, one of the big ones that is, is, is a, I, I don't want to call it a major. Um, impediment, but it is a consideration is that, uh, DOT will only. Fund if you make your, your bike trail, your recreational trail, uh, have value within your own town. Uh, borders. And so, and the way they define that is that each terminus. At each end of the bike trail, it has to be paved and accessible to some public area. So it's easy if we terminated at Ipswich River, if we terminated at 28, that's an acceptable terminus. But the whole goal was to have it go east to connect to that trail and going through Lynnfield and Middleton. And that's the whole point, because if you get out there, then you're exposed to a whole wide variety of different trails all the way to the ocean. Um, but by definition, by the DOT, you have to end it. At a place where it ends in like an intersection, a paved area. And so this has become a really complicated issue because of that one. Particular, um, aspect. So the consultant and Phil Hertz are working together again to look at. What can we do? There's some town property that we might get access. It's a, it's, um, going to take a little bit of a rework on what we're doing. So it's a, it's a setback. But not the end of the game. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallner. Mrs. Gonzalez, anything?
Um, just an update on the Putnam House Property Committee met last week. Um, they are making progress. They, um, they voted in officers and discussed their agenda going forward. They're hoping to have a meeting. Um, with, with Mr. Gilberto and maybe Town Council. They have some. Questions that they're not sure of, um, that they grant questions and things like that. Um, so hopefully we can get a, maybe a meeting together. And Mr. O'Leary, I don't know. You have so much knowledge. There's times when they're asking me questions and I'm like.
Yeah, I'm sorry I wasn't able to participate.
I know, I know it's hard. You can't do everything, but I just, I, I feel like there were questions they were asking me that maybe you could have answered. Um, just because, you know, you just know so much about all of that stuff. So, um, but. Their next meeting is March 16th. It's a Tuesday night and I know for the TA, I know that that's a tough night. And I don't know about you, Mr. O'Leary, but, um, I told them that I would try to get them connected to get their questions answered. So maybe if we can put another night together, a meeting, um. If that's possible.
Yeah, to piggyback on Leon, Steve, do me a favor, never miss one of the, don't leave me hanging on the wastewater talks because like you helped clarify a lot for me. And if I get to give like the update, people are going to think Source canceled by, you know, so like, yeah, make sure they're like, yeah, you're.
All right, maybe do, can you try to work on that? Maybe you can work on that offline. On scheduling that offline when people know a better, a better handle on that.
Uh, there was just one other thing that I would just, just in relation to, uh. The Putnam House, but also the Historical Antiquarian Society has a, a subcommittee, you know, looking into the Boston Post cane. Uh, giving out to the oldest resident. Uh, it's coming along nicely where they were actually going to be purchasing a cane, you know, and they're. Looking at putting together a, uh, display case for the cane and, uh, some methodology as to how the award and when the awards are going to be made, things like that. Just re-instituting something that was here years ago and it's a, it's a great idea and looking for a little bit of space in the, in the library to display the. The, the cane, but there'll be a whole proposal coming forward through the, to the administration, uh, to address it. But it's, uh, pretty exciting. It's good. They're excited about doing it. Um, they've secured some funds to purchase the canes and make some plaques and some other things. So it's, uh. Another ongoing effort which is admirable and again, adds the flavor of the community and recognizes long-term residents. Who've lived here more than 25 years. So it's, it's, it's great. So it's ongoing.
Is there an original cane somewhere around here?
It got lifted, uh, a few years back, so. It got lifted a few years back, so. So nobody knows.
Not in your basement, is it?
No, it's not in my basement. Someone was asking me, listen, anything left over from your mother's stuff? I said, no, there's nothing there. But no, it, 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 we know who the, we know who the last holder of the cane was and she ended up in a nursing facility and it was on display. It was in her room there and it disappeared, unfortunately. So it's been missing for a number of years. But, but they're working hard and diligently on it. They've come, they have a place that's going to make the cane up and it'll be nice. So it's gonna be good. And they're looking forward to at some point, you know, just highlighting it, what they're looking to do here before the board at some point, once they're ready to go.
It was Warren's pet project, right?
What a glorious pet projects. Yep.
That's right.
And then all the new business, I just wanted to mention, I was going to mention the Hallmark store and I think we all feel the same way about that. And it's nice to hear, Rich, that there's, there's a group doing that. That's fantastic. And hopefully they can make some progress. And I also wanted to mention, Des Golees is going out of business. And Dave Benoit, just, he did so much. He, he was right there always. Fundraising for the food pantry and you know, all kinds of different things. So you know, that, that's a real loss and hate to see that go also. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. I was going to mention that too, but seeing as how everybody else did, I won't say the same as everyone else, but I did get contacted and I think the TA got contacted too on that, just asked the board to kind of maybe talk about it. I know there's not really much we can do, but again, likely and like Mrs. Gonzalez said, I think it's good to hear, Mr. Wallner, that there's at least an effort to try to do something on their behalf, you know? You have such, so, so few businesses here in the community as it is. You hate to see, you know, you hate to see them close like that.
Well, maybe the board could just take a position endorsing whatever. And again, I don't know what the grassroots efforts it's going to entail, but endorsing their efforts to encourage the management company to retain the Hallmark store, you know, in the plaza. It's a, it's a token gesture on our part, but a small gesture on our part for, for the fifty-eight years of friendly business that was here. Is there anything wrong with us weighing in publicly, just saying, you know, this is a bad idea, poor public relation wise and these people need to be supported.
Was it, was it, was it an issue of, Mr. Wallner, maybe you know, was it a issue of did they just want something else in there or Hallmark just couldn't pay maybe two thousand twenty rents?
The rent went way up.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. The rent got, they got slammed with the rent.
Which is usually just a ploy to get them out.
And they've already, and they've already got someone else signed up to go in, you know, so. But the funny thing is if you go to the landlord website, they talk about community values, family values, all that other stuff. So, you know.
Don't they have an open space? I could have sworn there's a for lease sign right next to it, right? It's been there for a while, right?
I think so. I'm not sure, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. But they're pushing somebody else out too. I forget who else it is, but. Anyways, you know, the landlord at, at his own, because he apparently owns other properties. He claims, you know, family and community values, but here we are, you know, knocking out a piece of our community. So that's what the thrust letter came from. And I think Rita Mullen was one of the key, key authors of that letter. And I know Joyce, my Joyce worked on it with her and, you know, they put the number out there so people would call. So there's been a lot of people calling, getting involved. I don't know what can happen, but you know, we split them.
Well, if we all collectively agree that maybe we can, it, it doesn't really have any legal weight, certainly, but it, it could send a message. I think that's a good idea.
I'm in favor of signing my name to any letter.
Well, you know what? Let me get the, let me get the letter from Rita Mullen and, and we could look at that and use that as a, as a framework to work off. But I know we got sixty days. I, I know we have that.
So I tell Mr. Gilberto, this is a little bit different and it is midnight, but if, if, if Rich can, if Mr. Wallner can get that letter to you and then you can send it to each of us, I think we'd, we probably all would be willing to sign off on something like that, that just kind of expresses our position that, you know, you're eliminating a good, you know, tenant and a good business isn't something that we're, you know, we can get behind. We'd rather have them rethink their decision on the matter or something to that effect. If, I don't know what the letter says, Mr. Wallner, but.
We could send off as a separate letter on our own, you know, use that as a piggyback off of that, but also, you know, it, it, as, as a board, as board members. Yes. And onto something like the chair just mentioned. So I think.
Excuse me.
It'd be a starting point, right?
Yep.
Richard, if you could send me the draft that, that you have going around, that would be great.
I will.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion.
Kind of care. Can we change?
Mike, I have a motion, Mike.
One second. Mr. Gilberto, it's twelve thirty.
Just a friendly reminder that we do have a Saturday budget hearing upcoming this Saturday, February twenty-seventh. We are looking to start at eight o'clock promptly. We have spoken with departments and asked them to streamline their presentations because there isn't a ton that's new and we are going to be in a virtual forum. We'll be right back at it with Monday evening budget hearing on a week from ten, a week from yesterday, March first. Again, I know the agenda was lengthy tonight, but we're trying to really avoid compounding multiple department budget presentations with multiple other agenda items. So hopefully the time invested this evening will result in a shorter meeting next Monday night. So I just want to call that to your attention and remind folks, and if you haven't looked yet, the FY twenty-two operating budget is in the share file folder for FY twenty-two. It's been there for about a week or so. Thank you, Matt.
Okay. Thank you.
So who's delivering breakfast?
We don't have a plan for delivery, unfortunately. We could do it and meet the COVID expectations. I mean, I could deliver Twinkies if you'd like, but individually wrapped cupcakes or I don't know.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion seeing that, Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Studo?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzalez? I mean, you probably as I.
Thank you all for your time.
Goodnight, folks.